With one of our fifth grade students leading us in the pledge. And tonight from Zervis, we have Zoli, who Principal Beck describes as a friendly, vivacious fifth grade student, who demonstrates high levels of intellectual curiosity in the classroom, inquisitive, asking thoughtful questions and demonstrating creativity in her approach to learning. Zoli is kind, inclusive friend, and well-respected by her peers and teachers alike. So, Zoli, if you wouldn't mind coming up to lead us. There's no obligation to participate, but for those who are willing and able, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Zoli. We'll move to the public comment portion of our evening. We have five folks signed up in person for public comments. And then we have one remote commenter. And I believe that is Heather Talsick-Steven, just to tee that up. We'll go with the folks in the room to start. First, we have Ryan Normandin and Terry Alter.
Hello, Ryan Normandin, 616 Boylston Street. I wanted to talk to you about tonight about the report before you regarding the math curriculum self-study and provide some additional context that I thought would be important. On Monday, April 14th, my colleagues and I received a draft version of the report. During our department meeting the following day, we spent the full hour providing feedback on the report, its findings and its recommendations. Most of that feedback was honestly pretty negative regarding the portions of the report focused on high school. And I was therefore disappointed when I reviewed the final version of the report, which is before you tonight, and found that there were no substantive changes whatsoever contained within the final report. For a report titled "A Self-Study," as far as I can tell, none of our feedback actually made it into the report. I'll comment on a couple of other things that disturbed me in the draft. In reviewing the draft, there were conclusions and recommendations that were followed by insert data here. This wasn't data that had been collected but not yet incorporated. This was data collected through a survey we and our students had not yet completed. The final version includes the data, but that data does not appear to have informed anything about the surrounding report. However, the report overall does not seem to include a lot of data, yet makes recommendations for sweeping changes that would touch every part of student and teacher life at the high schools. And in some cases, there's data that exists that hasn't been included because the right groups are not talking to each other. A prime example of this is multi-level work or don't. But earlier this month, South Administration presented data to us, that was south across the whole building, that showed that not only do Black and Latino students continue to be overrepresented at the CP level, that overrepresentation grows in multi-level classes, and it grows bigger the more levels are mixed. Further, the number of As that Black and Latino students receive in multi-level classes goes down as compared to standalone CP classes. And so that was a disturbing trend that nonetheless, the report seemed to recommend that we move entirely to more heterogeneous groupings. Other recommendations included moving to one curriculum that would just be differentiated among the different levels. And I'll tell you that as someone who teaches, for example, junior honors math, and then I also teach senior CP math. And comparing these two things together, it's hard to emphasize unless you're like really there and seeing it, how kind of unrealistic that that recommendation is. I mean, we're talking about for at the honors level, students that end their year learning calculus for the first time. And at the CP level, we're talking about junior year CP students who, you know, what they need is they need more practice with adding fractions. They need practice, some of them with numerical operations with positive and negative numbers, things like that. And so recommending differentiation like that seems over ambitious. And so just broadly, what I would finish with saying is that I think that this report, at least at the high school level, I don't know about the others, just seemed pretty decoupled from reality in the buildings. And I think that my colleagues and I were pretty frustrated by a lot of the recommendations and feeling like our voices had not actually been included in the report. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Terry Alter, followed by Ali Frankie. And I did forget to mention, you have three minutes to make your public comment. At two and a half minutes, Vice Chair Prentner will give you a 30-second warning.
Thank you very much. Can you all hear me? Thank you. I don't think we need to acknowledge that we're in tough times. Obviously, what's going on is brutal. I'm very disturbed to hear that ICE has been doing raids in Newton. Thankfully, I'm grateful that everyone here is united together to push back against that. However, there is still a lot that has to be done in Newton itself, unrelated to national politics. Right now, obviously, there's a lot going on with this school budget. You know, obviously, we need to make sure we get as much money as we can in our public schools. Last year's strike, I know, was very divisive. And a lot of people feel very strongly on both sides. As I say that, as someone who strongly supported the educators from the first minute they went off-strike to the time they got their contract ratified. That said, I'm very pleased about the fact that there's been a great work from Chair Brasky and Superintendent Nolan to come up with a compromise to bring people together and ensure we get the funding that we need in our schools. I strongly call upon the school committee and especially our mayor, Mayor Fuller, to ensure that we get that funding and to make sure that our teachers, especially those who helped educate me, are able to get the funding that they need. Something I want to touch upon this is last month, Secretary of Health and Human Services, RFK Junior, made some pretty appalling comments about autistic people, about how, you know, we're not able to use the toilets on our own. We're not able to pay our taxes. We can't even hold full-time jobs. And I'll tell you, we're not for the educators that I got the opportunity and what learned what I needed to do to ensure I could, you know, pay my taxes, to hold full-time jobs, and to be who I can be, independent and striving to move forward in my life. And it is crucial to ensure that our public schools get as much funding as it can and to keep investing in our schools to ensure that our students can learn and to prove people like RFK Junior wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ali Frankie, followed by Eleanor.
Ali Frankie, Mossman Street. Thank you, School Committee, for offering Newton citizens of all ages the opportunity to speak about the issues we find most pressing. It's an interesting night to provide comments before you speak. I know this group is clear about not responding to public speakers, but anyone who wants to give thumbs up and say, "It's all good. We bridged the gap. Now is the time." All right, I see no thumbs. So much for Plan A. We will not get the song and words of praise. Here we go. All right, Mayor Fuller. You have heard many... But they're coming, I'm sure, later. All right, fantastic. Mayor Fuller, you have heard many citizens of Newton beseech you to bridge the gap between your allocation and the Level Services Plus budget. This committee, the City Council, and members of the public have spoken in public forums and through their letters, emails, and calls to your office. It is evident that there is a tremendous amount of support for public education in Newton. I found the City Council's discussion of its resolutions last Thursday to be both heartening and absolutely heartbreaking. The council meeting affirmed for me that the city absolutely does have the will to fund the schools. I hope that the multiple and creative ways the council provided last week did offend you, to the point of hurting any deal or arrangements you were working on with the school committee. The actions of the council were clearly well-intended. And we can all agree, it would be highly unfair to punish the school department and especially the children in their care for the actions taken by the legislative branch. Two years ago, our Girl Scout troop visited with you. And tonight, two of our scouts are here making comments, asking you to fully fund their schools. We expect a lot of Girl Scouts. We ask them to be honest and fair, considerate and caring, helpful, and to use resources wisely, all while making the world a better place. As a teacher, mother, and scout leader, I truly try to be a role model. And I expect the same of all of us. Right now, our city needs you, Mayor Fuller, to model not only intelligence and financial savvy, but also compassion, flexibility, cooperation, and collaboration. Please use Newton's resources wisely by being considerate of what so many people are urging you to do.
You have 30 seconds.
Education is always a good investment. We, the people, including practically every elected official, have spoken very clearly. Show us that you respect us enough to listen. Whatever details still may or may not need to be hashed out, I'm not sure. If you need to hash out any details with the committee, please do so tonight immediately here. We cannot waste another moment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eleanor. And Eleanor is followed by Dorothy Mazur.
Hi. My name is Eleanor, and I'm in third grade at Horace Mann. The money you won't give to the schools means that the classroom sizes will increase, meaning it will be harder for the kids to learn, especially if you cut kindergarten teachers. The classes will increase to 25 kids in elementary school. The budget cuts mean kids won't get what they need. The budget cuts also mean that helper teachers, special education teachers, and classes will be removed. If a class is 24 kids and the teacher has them sitting for a group of six, where's the 25th kid gonna sit? If the 25th kid sits anywhere in the classroom, the desk would block the walkways, being a fire hazard. That is very unsafe. Please fund the schools so we can stay safe and get a better education.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dottie Mazur, and I'm in third grade at Horace Mann Elementary. I'm speaking today because I care about my school and teachers. If you don't give the money that the district needs, then many teachers will lose their jobs. If that happens and class sizes get bigger, then there'll be no more room for us to learn. If there are 24 kids and the 25th must sit anywhere in the classroom, it can block the walkway. And if there's a fire alarm, the kids and teachers can't get by this. That is very dangerous for the kids and teachers. I hope you can make this work for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor and Dorothy, for sharing that. Our final commenter this evening is remote. Heather Talsick-Steven, if you can...
She's coming in.
Okay, I'm not sure why I have that background, but can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Heather Talsig. I live at 120 Garland Road. I appreciate the opportunity to address you again tonight on the topic of gun violence prevention and gun safety. As many of you know, both my daughters went through Newton Public Schools. I'm a neighbor to many current NPS students. I volunteer with Grassroots for Gun Violence Prevention, and I'm a co-founder of the Newton Gun Violence Prevention Collaborative. The gun violence statistics continue to amaze and anger and motivate me. There have been at least 430 school shootings, and more than 394,000 students have experienced gun violence since the Columbine shooting. A call to action happens in early June called "Where Orange?" And our own Mayor Fuller, I see you there tonight, will be making a National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation in Newton. And I believe that City Hall and/or the fountain will be lit in orange, reminding us that 125 people are killed by guns in the U.S. every day. I also wanted to let you know that I last spoke with NPS in January about reaching out to the NPS community with safe firearm storage messaging, especially in advance of the summer. And I wanted to encourage you all to prioritize sharing information in one of the upcoming district bi-weekly newsletters, the superintendent newsletters, similar to what was done by Superintendent Kathleen Smith. And that newsletter was Gun Safety Education Campaign, and it spoke to the partnership with Newton's Health and Human Services and the Newton PD, sharing resources from the American Academy of Pediatrics and other gun safety organizations. As an example, Medford Superintendent recently sent the following message to the Medford community, and I just wanted to read that to you briefly. Quote, "Providing our students, teachers, and staff with a safe and educational environment continues to remain our top priority in the Medford Public School District. Unfortunately, we are all aware of gun violence incidents that happen far too often across our country and the pain that cause school and local communities. As a result, continuously informing and educating our community about best safety practices supports our district values. Owning a gun is a personal decision, but secure storage is both a legal and a public safety issue. Kids and unsecured guns are a potentially lethal combination. Fortunately, a simple conversation can keep children out of harm's way. It doesn't need to feel strange or awkward to bring up the issue of how guns are stored. These conversations with your friends, caregivers, and relatives before the child visits can help save lives. NPS is proud to partner with the Be Smart! Community Volunteers to share resources regarding how to navigate these conversations about gun safety."
You have 30 seconds.
Whether you are asking in person or through electronic channels, there are many simple, effective ways to begin this important conversation. By working together, we can create a safer and stronger future. That's the end of that. And I just want to say, as we head into the summer, I want you to please help avert a tragedy in Newton by supporting the mayor's efforts in sharing firearm storage messaging with our NPS families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period for this evening. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Our meeting minutes from our May 5th meeting and a grant memo for a $5,000 state grant. Is there anything a member would like to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing nothing, would someone like to put forth a motion to approve the consent agenda? Paul?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, move by Paul, second by Rajiv. Let's take a vote. Word one?
Yes.
Word two, yes. Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda passes, nine to zero. And we will move on to our superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to look out upon the audience and ask anyone from the Strategic Planning Committee to please stand for a moment to be recognized. But I only see two. But what the heck, stand up and be recognized, you two. Along with our school committee members. Oh, three, four, yes. I'm doing that because I am concerned that the late hour of our agenda will mean that you will leave before I can recognize you as part of the agenda item. But I wanted to do that. So, everyone who's here or watching online, and you're going to stay for the whole thing, you'll hear about the work that these folks engaged in along with 70 other folks across the community to help develop the long-range strategic plan that is before the school committee tonight. Committee members and the public, I just want you to know that the school committee has an open Energy Commission seat for the Energy Commission in Newton. It is appointed by the school committee. Someone is stepping down. There has been a recommended person. It's listed here. So too listed here is the aims of this commission. If anyone is interested in sitting on this commission, please email Lisa Mazzola. That is the school committee secretary. All the information is in our materials here. You can also look on the school committee website for contact information. The school committee will hold some sort of interview or selection process if there's more than one applicant for that role. Our committee, I just want to point your attention to follow-up from our May 5th meeting, questions that were asked there that required further analysis. That is mostly about the private public school census results and the surveys that we did. So there were tables and enrollment analyses that were requested by all of you. They are contained in this memo. In addition, the questions that both Chris and Barry asked, the answers to those questions are here. And just for the public who didn't watch that must-see TV episode of Private School Analysis, there were questions about different years, different trends of where students matriculated to private schools, where they sleepaway schools, those types of things. So all that information is here for you. How far are private schools from the most commonly, from our elementary schools? And whether there was a link to common, to matriculation? Chair Brasky asked for some additional tables. They're contained here. And there was a question about, I believe from Mayor Fuller, about the, to the attendance officer, about attendance rates broken out by bus pass status. That wasn't you? Okay, someone asked that question, and we would like to get you that, but we need a little bit more time to complete that information. So that leaves one last special announcement. So I'd like to introduce to you and have him join us up here at the table, Dr. Mark Banks, who will be the acting principal at Newton South High School starting any minute now, as Principal Tammy Strauss is about to deliver her second child. Hi, Tammy, if you're watching. It is with incredible pride that I appoint Dr. Mark Banks to the acting principal role. He brings a decade of leadership at Newton South, where he has served as dean of students. Widely respected for a deep commitment to student well-being, inclusive school culture, and instructional equity, Dr. Banks has played a key role in shaping many of the school's most impactful initiatives. As a dean, he has led the South's advisory program, coordinated student leadership councils, and appointed and supported the Human Rights Council. He has also been instrumental in developing the district's portrait of a learner competencies, helping his students grow as engaged citizens, critical thinkers, and empathetic collaborators. He's been a trusted leader of many at South. He understands the strengths of that community and will ensure strong continuity and care for students, staff, and families during this transition. He holds a Doctor of Education in Ed Leadership from Boston College and a Mass Administrator license both as principal and superintendent levels. He has previously served as an English teacher, mentor, and brings a background rooted in inclusive practice, student advocacy, and responsive leadership. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Dr. Mark Banks to this role. And just that he always gets the mission. He is decked out in his South regalia. Dr. Banks, any remarks or things you'd like to share with the committee and the community?
Just very excited to take on the role. I was voluntold to do it, so I will do it. But it'll be exciting to do, and I wish Tammy the best. And I look forward to the next four months and then returning to being the dean of students in Goldrick House.
Well, we'll see. Not at South, I'm just saying. I've been on his case about being a principal for some time. Mark, we're really excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Let's move on to our discussion items for this. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any questions anyone had for Dr. Nolan on her, on her report before we move on? Okay, seeing none. All right, let's move on to our discussion items. We're going to go a little out of order in terms of the agenda here. And we will take up the update on the for-year '26 budget first. So there is a memo everyone received today from Dr. Nolan. Do you want to?
Somehow, my memo has walked away. Did you take it?
There you go.
All right.
Go ahead, Dr. Nolan, please.
So the memo before the committee does indeed, will mean that Ms. Frankie will have to sing to us later. And that a compromise between the school committee, the, well, I hope to have the school committee's endorsement of this. But the mayor and I have worked with the school committee chair and our constituents and our finance teams to come to a place where we have been able to come to an agreement to significantly close the gap between previously proposed and allocated budgets that has been the subject of many months of discussion. The details of that arrangement are here. And, you know, I'll invite the chair to say if there needs to be more discussion. There has been already free cash monies given by the mayor in order to address budget deficits prior to this. And those have been publicly shown in this meeting. So that included, for example, $1.3 million for health care and $1.17 million roughly to fund departmental expenses. In addition, the mayor has agreed to substitute an additional $1.1 million of free cash to specifically address maintenance costs that are seen as one-time, that are included in our current FY '26 budget. This is composed of $635,000 roughly of summer projects, $300,000 to fund upgrades to Newton South High School, which is in need of some significant accessibility and repair items, and repair items for, items identified during preventative maintenance for elevators, HVAC, and air handlers. So these are not things we repair all the time, but they are repairs that were slated for FY '26. So that is the additional infusion that has been given. So too then, I think there's been much discussion about $2.5 million worth of capital facility improvements that would also be funded through free cash allocations. That allocation is then reduced by the $1.1 million that will be applied to operating and is still used for capital facility improvements to the tune of $1.425 million. So the $2.5 that was initially promised at the get-go has been distributed differently and in a way that allows us to mend some of the gap that was in our operating budgets and allocation proposal and also make some facility improvements. So in total, then, that means of the proposed reductions that we were concerned about making on the school side, it does mean we continue with $243,000 of operational reductions, including MCAS tutoring stipends, field trip stipends, late bus, and language awards testing. And we will use operational, we will reduce operational costs by using $350,000 out of about 100 different revolving accounts that exist. So small amounts spread over many revolving accounts. Revolving accounts include things like instrumental music lesson accounts that, or foreign language tuition accounts, things like that. So $350,000 from those accounts will be deployed for operational costs, which will then allow us hopefully to carry forward $350,000 additional dollars to meet the budget gap. This also means that our list of personnel reductions that have to be enacted is very reduced to 3.2 FTE, down from 19.86. So that means there will be three Unit A digital learning coordinators and one-third of a position in Student Services that will not be funded at this time. The position will still exist and still serve students. It serves six students in our, in one of our visually impaired programs. We also have contracted services for visually impaired students. So at this time, that is a sufficient amount of service. And we have been assured that there will be no break in service for students who are receiving those, those services. This proposal also requires us to delay the opening of two programs. And we had, we have been watching these programs throughout. So if we're following a long school committee, this is page four. So just for the general public, preschool classrooms ebb and flow, just as kindergarten classrooms ebb and flow. So depending on the number of students who live in the city and who are ready to attend school, students age into three years old, and students with disabilities who are three years old age in at different times. So preschool is a wild ride in that we have to be watching all of the early intervention roles, the move-ins, all of those pieces, so that we can adequately staff our necessary preschool classrooms. This year, we had three classrooms to start for our youngest learners. And we've been watching the head count. And at this time, we feel that we can delay the preschool opening to the winter, given the three-year-old head count and who we now know is staying in the city and who can become eligible at what time. Now, I say this to you, and in my prior districts, we never pre-planned for preschool classes. We came to our government partners when they, when the classes became necessary, and we asked for those teachers. So we will have to potentially do that next year if there are surprises or significant move-ins or something to that nature. So I just want to be full disclosure that we are delaying this open, opening, and our team feels just fine about that portion. But we're going to continue to watch and make sure that we don't underserve our young people who are eligible. So that piece will be delayed. So too will be the Part II of the REACH program at Lincoln Elliott. We have fully funded the rising students who are coming to that building, who need that service in the grade four. We had four special education aides budgeted in order to address fifth-grade REACH students who have not yet had IEP meetings that have made that necessary. Should students need that service, we will, I will come back and tell you about that and when that happens. But right now, we feel we can delay that to the winter at this time as well. And I want to be clear to any parent who may be in, touching the constellation of this program. We will get students what they need when they need it. At this time, we, we don't have the capacity to budget for students that are not in a program right now. So we want to make sure that students have what they need, but at this time, we feel we can delay that. So between the non-personal reductions, the... So between the non-personal reductions, the 3.2 FTE reductions, the $445,000 of program delay, and the $350,000 of revolving fund use, we have been able on our side to reduce the, by $1.35 million since our April second budget vote. And I just want to say, of course, there are some remaining concerns and assumptions about that, but I want to say that, you know, compromise here is, has been on all sides, and it's been a deliberate act of leadership and care for the community. And I want to say that I appreciate that while I think we're all exhausted, we definitely all tried to live our principles in the best way possible and do what we thought was right by our respective sectors. We both have some concerns. So the mayor and I share some concerns that, of course, we're going to have to advocate throughout the FY '26 school year and the FY '27 budget process to make sure that the expenses supported by free cash move into the base allocation of the budget for next year. So we don't want to lose sight that these are, in many cases, expenses that we, we need each year, and, and a budget cut of $5 million is not small to us. So as you know, a $2.2 million cut was about 20 staff members. So a $5 million deficit in our budget would do some significant damage to us. We anticipate through what we're hearing from our government partners at the state level, a possible incremental $872,250 of chapter 70 funding coming to the city of Newton, but that has not yet been affirmed. And I just want to be clear that free cash allocations are subject to city council votes. So after this meeting, should the school committee vote that, the school, the city council is meeting this evening and needs to take that vote on our behalf so that this all comes to fruition. So in case you've been watching along, that means that our classroom teaching positions at elementary, middle, and high school stay at status quo. There is no additional cut that is made over and above those cuts that I proposed myself back at the beginning of this budget process, which was not a small amount of cuts then either, also $2.2 million. So with that, I would ask the committee to support this scenario, and I've put some draft motion language here that I would urge you to support.
Thank you for that update. I'll open up to the committee for questions or comments. Rajiv, then Paul.
So thank you, Mayor Fuller. Thank you Superintendent Nolan. I think at the beginning of this very difficult process, the, the goal was to get to a compromise and, and one that would be slightly uncomfortable for all parties. And I, I know it took a tremendous amount of effort and, and looking very carefully, digging into budget details by, by members of the mayor's team, by school committee members, and by members of the senior team at, at NPS. So I just want to express, I, I know, because I saw some of it up, up close, the amount of effort that's gone into these discussions and, and coming up with where we are today. And I'm, I'm fully supportive. I, I am slightly uncomfortable with this, which is exactly where we should be.
That's a good way to put it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rajiv, Paul.
Thanks, Chris. Let me pile on a little bit on Rajiv's comments. I too want to express my appreciation for everybody's hard work on this. You know, at the beginning of this, Chris, you, you gave us some advice about how often these budget discussions can be very contentious, and that, and you advised us to, to hold together, to stand by a commonly held belief on the part of everybody in this room that we're engaged in a noble enterprise here and that there is very, very strong support for the approach that Dr. Nolan has set forth for the improvement of our schools. And I've never heard a word of doubt about any of that through all of these meetings. And, and that's something in itself. That's, as Dr. Nolan will tell you, is not only, not always the practice within, within school committees and in other jurisdictions, and even in this jurisdiction in the past. So I think the public should feel good that the pathway for this school system is very positive, and I think the discussion we'll have later about the strategic plan will reinforce that even, even further. That does leave the future to be worked on in, in a big way, as we all recognize the use of one-time funding and free cash for current operational expenses builds in a hole for the future, and it's, it is ever more difficult to dig out of that hole. So responsibility for the next school committee and the next mayor and, and Dr. Nolan will be to work together to come up with that long-term plan that, Chris, you've been very strongly supporting in all your comments over, over the past several years. And I'm, I'm looking forward as a private citizen to watching that happen. So I just wanted to, to say that. I also feel it necessary to say that although many of the comments from members of the public have been extremely helpful, there have been comments made that go to the integrity and good intentions of the mayor. And I just have to say, having known her and worked with her for, I don't know how many decades now, that I have seldom met a public servant who is more devoted, good, and truly believes in the importance of the, of vibrant school system to the fabric of this community. And so I'm hoping, Mayor Fuller, that the comments that were a bit more personally directed at you, that might have indicated otherwise, will roll off your back and that you'll be heartened by the, the more general sentiment of, of the public in terms of your principles and your, your direction. So this, this resolution isn't a tremendous victory. It actually, it actually consists of getting over a stumbling block for this year that you all worked hard on solving, and I congratulate you for that effort. And I think members of the public should feel some confidence in our governing bodies that are in that way to achieve a sensible result, given the current fiscal constraints. So, Chris, I'm, if it's timely, I'm, I'm happy to make the motion that Dr. Nolan suggests. And I'll do that if, if you don't mind, unless.
Or yours.
Okay. So I'd like to move that the school committee vote to authorize the superintendent to use a budget of $292,963,623 for fiscal year '26, a budget that includes two funding sources from, from the ongoing city budget. I just want to clarify, the two funding sources are from the ongoing city budget, an operating budget allocation of 288-713-973 from the city of Newton, and an amount of $4,249,650 from the Education Stabilization Fund. But also recognize, and again parenthetically importantly, in addition to those funding sources, above the school committee supports, the following NPS-related free cash items totaling $4,995,612 to wit $1.3 million for health insurance costs, $1,170,612 for departmental expenses, $1,100,000 for charter maintenance costs, and $1,425,000 for the NPS list of facilities projects. That's my motion, Chris.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that?
I'd like to second. I'd like to second to the motion.
Okay.
I also appreciate, as, as my colleague said, tremendous efforts by Superintendent Nolan and Mayor Fuller to reduce this gap and in, in this very difficult, challenging financial environment. Appreciate that effort.
Thank you, Anping. Other, Mayor Fuller, and then Barry.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what's already been said. Thank everyone for all the hard work that they have done. I had initially planned to say that I felt like this was a big old waste of time, and we should have just started off figuring this out beforehand. I'd like to respectfully disagree with myself. I think that a lot of what we've talked about over the past month or two has been about rebuilding trust, and there's still quite a bit to be done, but I hope that the public can see that we, as your elected officials, did exactly what we're supposed to do. We debated in public. We listened to your comments. We took your comments in, and we came back with a resolution that's not perfect, but it does a lot of what we want to do. And I know that one of the reasons I got into this initially was to be able to advocate for others, to advocate for myself, and I feel as though a lot of people had their voice heard through this process, and I think that's the most important thing. So thank you all for your comments. Thank you, everyone on the committee and the mayor, for participating in this. And I just want to reiterate some of what Paul was saying, and I hope now, while we got to where we essentially wanted to go, that we don't forget that we still need to do the hard work of figuring out how to fix this issue long-term, and let's not take our eye off on that and continue to push forward.
Thanks, Barry. Mayor Fuller.
The passion of our parents and caregivers, the beauty of our students, including the two third graders from Mason Rice tonight, the kiddos who were at the countryside ribbon cutting this morning, the ones, the 11,400-plus throughout our system, is so real and so important to all of us, and they are supported by magnificent teachers and educators and staff throughout NPS. The tricky part for all of us who are lucky enough to live in Newton is that our revenues grow modestly here, and we've been through an extraordinary period of inflation and expanding student needs. What we need to do is harness the deep passion for education into positive action rather I couldn't have been more happy a couple of years ago to lead an effort for an operating override. There will be lots of other levers to consider in addition to an operating override, and the economic cycle is really lousy right now. People are so understandably anxious about their personal finances that asking people to increase their taxes even to support education, which is a core value here in the community, is really tough. I, as mayor, have been happy to pull other levers from going to our retirement board and pull down our pension payments to looking for efficiencies, to taking on NPS costs over to the city side. All of these and more will need to be considered in the days ahead. I was happy to squint a bit to, to hold up the, what I think of the financial integrity of our system and how you use one-time funds with operating, ongoing operating costs. Barry, it was a bit of a journey. Please know I listened all along, and I promise you, when some, sometimes people went low, I tried my best to always stay high and remember that we're all doing this for the kids, for I think we're in the right place for May 19th, 2025. I'm grateful to Chris and to Anna for their many hours, to all of the school committee, a shout out to Liam Hurley, the CFO on the, on the school side, who put in a ton of hours, and yep, there's lots of people over on City Hall who are doing it. I also want to thank in particular Counselor Lenny Gentile, who leaned in hard, as well as Mark Laredo and Susan Albright, three city counselors who are all former school committee members, and for working together. We are a tri-part system with a mayor, a school committee, and a city council, and it does help when we all try to row in the same direction, but sometimes we start off in slightly different directions. But I'm glad that we've all ended up in, I think, the best possible place, given a lot of competing priorities here, as our residents care deeply about education, they care deeply about public safety and our library and, and getting our roads fixed and getting the trash picked up, and yes, having some arts and culture and swimming pools and athletic fields. We have a whole bundle of services. Thank you all for leaning in and working towards, I think, a good plan forward.
Thank you. Emily?
Just real fast, because I think many of you have already expressed what I was going to say, but just quickly. When this all started, I didn't, could not see a path forward. I really could not, and I think that I'm very glad that we were able to come to a compromise. I know reality that there is still a hole that's going to need to be filled at, at the end of this, but I'm thrilled that we're going to be able to move forward now with the other things that we want to be focusing on. Not that we haven't been, but I know that it's been sort of hanging over our heads for the last month and a half. And Ally, I really wanted to do this before, but, okay?
Thanks, Emily. Tamika.
So ditto to everything everyone's previously said. I will lend my commendation and my gratitude to all of the hard work that's brought us here. I will echo Rajiv's comment about being slightly uncomfortable with where we are. And I will say, I am much, much more comfortable here than I was at the school committee purporting to move a budget beyond our allocation. That was a line, in my opinion, that we could not cross, and that line was made very clear by our legal guidance. And that line was made very clear by our legal guidance. In my opinion, Barry, I'm going to agree with your initial kind of thought that this, I won't say it was a waste of time. It wasn't. It was simply, I think we're ending up where we should have started, meaning at a compromise that meets our needs and that doesn't cross any impermissible lines. I'm grateful that we are able to revise our budget and now are able to close the gap. It doesn't eliminate the gap. There's still a substantial amount of work that's going to be needed. And it's that that I'm really looking forward to putting my energies and encouraging everybody who was out there writing emails, holding up signs, writing, composing songs, which we've yet to hear, doing all of that awesome advocacy. Hold that passion and that fervor for when the ask is upon you. Because it's coming. There's going to be a question put before our residents, put before our council, put before our committee. And that, that question's going to be, what do we want these awesome schools to look like going forward? And how much are we willing to reach into our own pocketbooks and support that? For me, the answer is clear. I'm, I'm a yes. I'm willing. We need to make sure that the advocacy and that the fire that we've all been witnessing is sustained and that when that question comes to call, people will say yes. And those people include our, whoever the next mayor is going to be. It includes our next composition of our school committee. It includes our next composition of our city council. I think we, all of us together need to do great things for these schools. So thanks for all of the work that led us here. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Tamika. I'll say, I think the reason I'm partly comfortable with this is what Dr. Nolan put on the memo here largely mimics the economics that we sent to the mayor in terms of the split of the economic burden of how we bridge the gap in a similar magnitude, just with a different funding source. Different funding source than what we proposed. It does not include a backstop for the kindergarten aides, should that be required. However, Maureen Lemieux, the city CFO, said at the city council meeting Dr. Nolan and I were at, I guess it was last week, that the city's plan would be to utilize that incremental Chapter 70 funding to meet that liability, should that liability arise. Of course, since the time that that April 1st proposal was put together, which was recognizing a distribution of outcomes, some of which were rather severe, there has been free cash appropriations that have been made to the schools to that could very well bridge the entirety of that gap. We do have an incremental $800,000 of Chapter 70 funding that, that we didn't know about at the time. And we do have a, let's say, very active city council working on behalf of the schools to advocate to see that we get funding in ways that they have not ever done so to my knowledge. And so I say thank you to those counselors for all that work. The part that is most troubling to me is that this remains playing the same game that's been played for a number of years, where we will pass a budget that has a number that is not reflective of the costs of operating the Newton Public Schools. And a bunch of these expenses will just simply live off the books in the ether, as if the expenses were never incurred and the funding was never put forth. And that is part of the opaqueness of the NPS and city budget that erodes the trust in the public and part of why we go through this on a seemingly annual basis. And so I had planned to come in here tonight and offer what I believed was a much more clear motion with the same economic output. But I was warned that would potentially risk the economics of this deal. So I will encourage Dr. Nolan, and I have encouraged Dr. Nolan and her team to make sure that our budget books reflect the true cost of running NPS and that while our charter maintenance line and our healthcare insurance line may show one number, we're going to show the gross number and then we're going to show the offsetting funding from the city of Newton to achieve that net number, so that there is no confusion as to what operating NPS. I further have issue with the way this came about and how this motion has been dictated to us. I do think there is one substantive issue we need to address in the, in the motion, which is the $1.425 million of facilities projects. I can argue either side of this, but I think there are argument to be made that we may want that money withheld for the latter half of this year or next year's budget, in particular recognizing next year, we do have a meaningful bump in our contract with our staff that is going to have to be funded. So I think that is a fair question and something this committee should think about as to whether a statement of support for that piece is always at the wrong time. Whether a statement of support for that piece is what we truly believe is the best use of that $1.425 million or whether that would potentially be better saved for down the road. I guess if we're going to entertain that and given that this language is concrete, I would ask if that change would in any way risk the economics of the transaction in the eyes of the mayor?
Obviously, okay, if I respond.
Yes, please. Yes.
Sorry.
I'm asking, yes.
Yeah, I thought you were. New idea. So I prefer to think about things rather than giving a fast reaction, but my fast reaction concern, I have worked really hard with Dr. Nolan, with you, Chair Bresky, with city councilors and others to be as careful as possible to use free cash for one-time items. You are asking me to support using free cash for ongoing operating costs as the contract requires an increase in pay, a COLA for our very important educators. That crosses the line of the financial integrity of the system. So no, I cannot support using $1.425 million to support the operating costs of NPS. Now, I'm mayor until presumably January 1st at noon. There's a different mayor sworn in at that moment. My, I think you'll need to have discussions probably with the leading candidate. There is clearly a leading candidate at the moment. He may have a different view about free cash than I do. I think the list of projects on the $1.425 are important and serious investments. But no, I will not support shifting $1.425. Or, but if you withdraw the request from the city council and you don't use the $1.425 and you wait and see if a future mayor might be interested in doing that, a decision for the school committee, but I think you are shortchanging the building needs that are necessary and important today on the hope that a future mayor would, in my mind, violate what free cash is used for and risk the financial integrity of the city. But that's an important decision for the school committee. But if you vote against the $1.425 tonight, I can certainly ask the city council not to fund it.
So just to be clear, my acute question was whether that needs to be part of the motion, which is neither a statement of support nor denial of it.
So just lots of procedures are kind of arcane and I understand that. The school committee doesn't vote on free cash items. The city council does, even when they are directly for NPS purposes. The motion in front of everybody is to clarify. It literally says, in addition to the funding sources that add up to the 292-plus million, the school, school committee supports the following NPS-related free cash items that total 4.995612. If this school committee does not support those, this is the time to speak up. But it will be withdrawn. I will, I will withdraw it from the DACA request. The funds will not be available for you, for the students, for teaching and learning and for important NPS facilities. So I hope that clarifies.
I'm, I'm just, I apologize. I'm just wanting to make sure I'm clearly understanding what you're saying. If the school committee were to say, or if there was an amendment put forth to say that the $1.425 be stricken from this motion, just as simple as that. Your position would be that you would withdraw your appropriations of free cash? Well, some of them are already approved, docketed and approved by the city council, not the full city council, but.
I told you it was arcane.
So.
So just.
That, that's the scenario I was contemplating, to be clear, without any, just as an item for the school committee to take up in future discussion, for the city council to take up in future discussion.
Let me try to answer it a different way, using different words. Free cash can only be voted out by essentially June 2nd by the city council. That allows for a chartering on the June, I think it's the 16th. Don't hold me to the exact dates. So everything is set up to go forward with the city council in support of this, which I understood until this moment, you were supportive of, but new news and we are all allowed to change our mind along the way. As you know, I had initially come forward with $2.5 million of free cash for facilities. We were swapping in $1.1 million tonight out of charter maintenance facility items and keeping the, another $1.425 million. If you are suggesting that the $1.425 million is no longer of interest to, for facilities, it would be, I have to dock it that. I've got the letter ready, waiting for the vote tonight to have $2.5 million going for facilities, $1.1 for charter maintenance, $1.425 for other important facilities needs. If you're saying tonight, Chair Bresky, that you don't want the additional $1.425, I don't have to docket it. All the other ones would move forward and those projects would not be done. So I'm, I'd be interested in the superintendent's feeling about this, but you cannot count on free cash goes away. So wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that as a way forward, but school committee can make their own decision.
Okay. I think that's probably clear enough and I think I understand what your position is now. For the record, the motions I did send you over the last 24 hours did not have that item in them. So I don't think that is new news. I would take objection to that. Dr. Nolan, did you have something you wanted to share?
No, I mean, if you're resolved that you don't, you're not proposing that, then I will be quiet. If you are, I will respond.
It was simply a question of, is this something the committee should deliberate about? If we say we're going with this language and that's the motion everybody wants, then there's, there's nothing to discuss. I am presuming the committee is in favor of the rest of all those items because they do play into closing that gap of our operating budget. That's all. That was, it was a, is this something the committee should entertain? But given the prior discussions I've had with the mayor, I wanted to know if that would jeopardize the economics of the larger deal. Rajiv?
I think you have an answer.
Yes.
Okay. Unless there are, unless there's additional discussion or amendments, friendly or otherwise, we have a motion on the table and should probably move forward with that.
Tamika, did you have something to say or are you, do you, are you actually moving the question?
I don't know if there's any.
Sorry. I don't know if there are other comments and if not, I would.
I see Alicia's hand up.
Yeah, I, I share the concern about having the $1.4 set out for facilities projects that are not projects that we had originally identified as our best and highest needs. I think the current plan on the table, while I'm incredibly happy, does not include things like cuts to frontline teachers. And I think we should all be very glad that we are where we are today with that. It still is a very risky plan. An additional $350,000 of carryforward is, I believe, recognized as not a good way to balance a budget. These programs that we're considering delaying for part of the year, those pumpkins show up, we got to serve them. We don't have a choice. So in my mind, having that free cash sit with the city of Newton and confidence in a future administration being willing to invest it in NPS is something we should consider.
Thanks, Alicia. Any other questions or comments? Tamika?
I am going to move the question.
Okay. So let me just check.
Yeah.
It's been a while since we've had a question moved. Give me one second. Let me go to my cheat sheet. Let, let me ask you this. That will require a second and a vote. Do we, is that necessary or is, does anyone have any other comments? Can we?
I withdraw if we're ready to move.
Yes, perfect. Okay, yeah.
Everyone playing Robert's Rules Bingo at home, you just got the middle star.
All right. Let's take a vote then. Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two is. Ward two is no for the reason that we provide our own motions. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight?
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, that is eight to one Lisa on that motion. Dr. Nolan?
I might get some sleep tonight for the first time in many months. I just want to say thank you to the community. I want to say thank you to Mayor Fuller. I want to say thank you to our team and our finance team, which is Liam Hurley, but it's also Owino Ohiyambo and Alyssa Behringer, who have been just incredible. I just want to say, my father always used to say that everyone who leaves a well-fought battle that ends in compromise leaves a little happy and a little unhappy. And I think we're there. Rajiv kind of said that at the beginning. I do want to say that a huge silver lining of this was everyone turned to me after the strike last year and said, so what are you going to do to bring us together? And the one thing we've all been doing together is a very, very deep dive into what we are spending money educationally on for education in this city and what it means to us, all of us. From community members to government partners and to children, to our NTA partners, to my central team, there has been a real dialogue and transparency. And in live, I've spent a lot of time on this, and I could spend time on a lot of other things. I'm sure Mayor Fuller and Chair Bresky would say the same. But I'm all in on continuing this conversation because all kids need to get what they need when they need it in this school system. And where we don't forget the kids and the families like me and mine, and maybe you and yours, who are middle-class folks for whom a strong public education is the only thing. And it is the difference between one future and another type of future. So we have to be all kids, all families, every day, all comers, all services. And those services need to be dependable and reliable so that we both attract the right kind of workforce and we can have our families trust that we care for their young people. That's what it means to thrive. And it's what we need for our country and for Newton and for our future. An intergenerational snuggle together for the next generation's future. And I want to say, no worries, Chair Bresky. I will keep advocating, budget book, document or no, and also being creative and realistic about the ecosystem of finances that we live in. And please know that disagreement and advocacy is not disrespect. It's just for kids all day, every day. And I thank you all so much.
Thank you. Let's move on to our next agenda item. Did you want to go to the math curriculum?
Yes.
Yeah, the math curriculum update?
Oh. She's like, I am so out of here. Okay, while our math curriculum folks get situated, Mr. Chair, if I may, just speak to the memo that I sent you all. Just to frame how we do curriculum reviews in the system. So for example, I sent the school committee a memo curriculum in our district. And how do we select it? And I just want to say that Dr. Flanagan and her team in Teaching and Learning are going to tell us all about math tonight and the first curriculum review in a long time with the first curriculum consulting. But I just want to say to you that there are very strict parameters around how we are going to develop curriculum in this district. And it hasn't happened in a long time. So I'm sure that that feeds into worries about who has say and influence. And, you know, are there textbook companies coming to us and pitching us stuff and influencing us and other outside groups and political groups? And so there is a memo posted in our materials for tonight that directly addresses how we do it. And a cycle was created by Dr. Flanagan this fall and shared with the committee, and also a schedule for the next 10 years of these curriculum reviews. I just want to be clear that in recent weeks, select members of this committee have been receiving advocacy emails asking the committee to make resolutions banning certain political groups from having a say in what we do. And I just want to say that from time to time, my office has also had advocates asking for bans of particular curriculum materials or those books, whatever. So I share this memo to say that the process for curriculum adoption does not include outside groups, advisories, or curriculum companies, incorporate recommendations from individuals, advocacy groups, or from companies into what we do. We actually use our data-driven, research-based analysis and resources in our industry that are standard. And I've listed them in these memos. We work with the Department of Education. And we also look to national organizations. So for example, we read extensively from the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics before we got going on this curriculum review. At times, we hire curriculum consultants. I think we can all agree that math was a pretty hot potato in the system and that there was certainly doubt cast on who was on what side of what was going on with math. Outside consultants come in. And while they have no specific dog in the fight, they can talk to us from their area of expertise. And you're going to hear about that tonight. I also want to say that consultants, we do not simply just take their stuff and implement it. It is whatever they bring us, their recommendations, their resources. We have to vet them through the curriculum process that we have indicated we will use. And that includes curriculum committees, regular updates to the school committee, then socializing ideas with leaders and teachers. And since there have been very few curriculum committees over the years here, we know that trust and routines for these committees need a little time to take place. So this is the first one. We're certainly open to feedback after. And we've had a lot of feedback along the way. The other thing everyone needs to know is that adoption of curriculum happens right here. We adopted Open Syed curriculum earlier this fall. Last year, we adopted EL. So those are the curriculum resources the public can turn to. Dr. Flanagan also has a curriculum website. It's for families. It says what is covered at each grade level. We update it as we adopt curriculum. And curriculum is a living, breathing aspect of schools. We update it regularly. We communicate it back to you. Substantial changes are voted here. There are clearly a lot of resources being used in the system right now that may or may not have been vetted at a central level. It's going to take time for us to get through all of those curriculum reviews, but you have a schedule. And I share with the community that we have a policy for how curriculum is developed, how curriculum is adopted, and what instructional materials are used within our classes. And there is also a process for reconsideration of instructional materials if families are concerned. And there's also a place on the Teaching and Learning website for you to speak directly to Dr. Flanagan as a family member about your concerns that you have. So with that, I am so excited to have Gina and her team here for this long-awaited review. So Gina and team, take it away. Thank you so much for having us. We are so excited to be here tonight to share with you all the great things we've learned about math education in Newton Public Schools. A lot of hard work has gone into this, and it required a lot of collaboration. I want to give you some highlights in just a few minutes. But before I do, I do want to introduce to you our consultants who worked side by side, countless hours spending talking to teachers, going through curriculum documents and assessments, and going through our classrooms. Norma Gordon and Dr. Jacob Foster. So they're going to be getting into this in just a few minutes. But their expertise and their help in this process has been very much appreciated. So on behalf of the Office of Teaching and Learning and our math colleagues from across the district, I'm really pleased to share with you the results of our year-long examination into the math learning experiences here in Newton Public Schools. Like I said earlier, a lot of hard work went into this process. And I hope this document provides all of our stakeholders with a clear vision of the work ahead. As we present the findings and recommendations from the pre-K to 12 math self-study, I'd like to begin by establishing a shared language and context. As this is the first time in many years we've taken a comprehensive look at math education across our district, it's a meaningful opportunity for reflection, collaboration, and improvement, all in service of our shared goal of doing what's best for our students. This self-study provides a district-wide snapshot of math instruction. While it doesn't capture every classroom in detail, it does draw from a wide range of sources, including curriculum materials, classroom walkthroughs, assessments, student work, feedback from educators, students, and families. The process was designed to be inclusive and to be ongoing. And we will continue to engage those who design, deliver, and experience education in Newton. Our goal tonight is to share what our consultants learned to strengthen the foundation already in place in Newton Public Schools. I want to thank our math educators from across the district who opened up their classrooms for this process and for their hard work each and every day, ensuring our classrooms are rigorous and engaging places of learning. I also want to thank the students and the families who provided thoughtful feedback in our surveys. I'd next just like to clarify a few key concepts that you're going to hear over and over again in the report. Curriculum, as we've talked to before, is a framework outlining what is expected to learn and ensures consistency and equity while giving teachers the flexibility to bring learning to life in their own unique ways. Common curriculum refers to a shared set of learning goals, materials, and assessment that all schools follow. Whether purchased or teacher-developed, it is approved by the district to serve schools equitably. Common assessments are tools used across the district to measure student learning consistently. These assessments help us monitor progress, identify learning needs, and improve instruction. While some across the district may use the same assessment, such as final exams in a specific course, we do not yet have common assessments consistently used in all schools, courses, or grade levels that are used for the manner described. We recognize that "common" can sometimes be misunderstood as "uniform." But the curriculum is not a script. It is a framework. It sets the foundation while teachers bring it to life. Curriculum and the individual teacher work in tandem, and great things happen when there is a clear structure. It may help to think of the curriculum review process like a home inspection. We're walking through every room, grade level, to see what's working, what's outdated, and what needs attention. We also check our blueprint, which is the standards and learning goals, to make sure that we're building with purpose and that its design is meeting the needs of today's students, not yesterday's students. And just like homeowners involve the whole family in making decisions about their home, we rely on the input of teachers, parents, students, and the community to help guide our improvements. In the end, the review gives us a renovation plan, not to tear down what's working, but to strengthen, modernize, and ensure that our curriculum remains a place where all students can indeed thrive. Before I turn the presentation over to our consultants, I would also like to provide some clarification regarding the self-study process itself. The self-study was indeed a collaborative process involving Newton math educators, students, and families. It was never intended to be authored externally without the voice of our stakeholders. On the contrary, the self-study process was built on contributions from stakeholders across the district. Teachers played a vital role in sharing experiences, insights, materials, data, and concerns throughout the process. The feedback gathered informed both the report and the broader understanding of how our math program is experienced across schools and levels. Next, I'd like to outline the role of the consultants. We engaged external consultants intentionally, not to override teacher expertise, but to help provide an objective, independent lens on the curriculum. Their role was to synthesize information, offer comparisons to best practices and research, and highlight areas for further inquiry and growth. While some recommendations in the report may feel challenging and may not align to the opinion of all individuals, they are not directives. Rather, they represent outside observations designed to help us reflect and improve. I'd also like to emphasize that recommendations are not decisions. We want to emphasize that the recommendations in this report are just that, recommendations. They are not district policy, as they have not been adopted by our school committee. The next step in this process is a thoughtful and deliberate review of these recommendations by the Math Curriculum Review Committee, which will include representation from across the educated. Community will examine all data, all feedback, including the concerns raised by teachers, students, and families before making any decisions or recommendations about curriculum changes. This is particularly true regarding discussions around multi-level classrooms at the high school. While our consultants will share a few thoughts on this tonight regarding multi-level classes are ongoing at both high schools, and we hope to update you in the fall with more information. It's also important that this particular issue be known as a piece, but not the primary focus of the larger pre-K to 12 math experience and curriculum review. And finally, I'd like to reiterate that our ongoing commitment to inclusive dialogue. We recognize that not every perspective made it into the final draft in the way that they had hoped. That does not mean that their voices were ignored. The report is a starting point, not the final word. We are committed to continuing this conversation with transparency and with deep respect for the professionalism and experience of our educators in our community. So on that note, I'd like to draw your attention to our presentation tonight. Couple of our goals this evening is we are going to provide you an overview of the self-study. We'll talk a little bit about the mass vision and mission that is being developed. We'll talk a little bit about the self-study process itself and the curriculum review. And then Norma and Jake will talk about the findings and recommendations. We'll have a little bit of information to share on multi-level classes and then hopefully get some questions and answers. And then lastly, we'd like to talk to you about what the next steps is once we kind of go through the self-study. So next slide. One more. So this is a draft that we are currently working on in terms of the mass vision and mission statement for the department. It actually was started last year by the leadership of our math leaders and our math departments. And so we're trying to incorporate all the things that are also being emphasized in our portrait of a learner. And I'm hoping that next year, as we start the curriculum review process, this will be finalized. Our next slide. I just also wanted to remind you, I know you're getting sick and tired of seeing this little circle here, but it's really important that the committee understands that this is a process. It is a strategic process. And it is one that, you know, we want to know where we are at every stage. So again, we're at the first phase of the curriculum review cycle, starting with our self-study. Next slide. So this is just a broad brush of our self-study process. I can't emphasize the amount of time and energy that went across this district to do this work. It was exciting. We learned a lot. And as you know, you heard a little bit tonight, not everybody might not agree with everything that's put into the self-study. But I promise you that it is one that is ongoing and that will keep trying to refine to make, definitely reflects the majority of our stakeholders. We began with a committee selection at the beginning of the year with over 16 teachers and administrators. We met maybe four times collectively, but there was some work to be done in between. We also engaged in learning walks across the district with the Math Curriculum Review Committee, which Norma and Jake were very helpful in providing a look-forward tool, or rubric, if you will, to kind of calibrate our data. There was a lot of data that was collected, including curriculum guides, assessments, crosswalks, student work, and surveys. And then, of course, the big work of analyzing all that data and sharing that with our math teachers' principals throughout the district. Next slide. This gives you a little bit more detail of how the self-study actually flowed. As you can see here, I mentioned a lot of the things in the slide before, but this just kind of gives you a little bit more details of our timeframe and who was involved with each one of those tasks. Next slide. Right, on that note, I'd like to turn it over to Norma and Jake. They're going to walk you through their specific findings and recommendations. We'll answer some of your questions and then share with you the next steps for next year. Norma and Jake?
Good evening, members of the school committee and the Newton community. We want to thank you for the opportunity to share highlights from the mathematics curriculum review self-study report. My name's Norma Gordon. I'm here with Dr. Jake Foster. And together, we worked closely with the district's Mathematics Curriculum Review Committee when it was launched in the fall of 2024. We facilitated the collaborative self-study and authored the report you've received. The dense one. The report aims to provide an objective perspective on findings and recommendations, as Gina alluded to, for district deliberations. Development of the findings included regular input and review by members of the review committee. The recommendations for the district deliberations, our recommendations are there to inform the continued work of the committee moving forward with the review process, which is a multi-year process, as Dr. Flanagan had shown you. I'm going to turn it over to Jake now to walk through the findings.
Great, thank you. So I'll try to summarize what is a pretty extensive document in a relatively short period here. But just a note about how the slides and report are set up. Each slide here summarizes a few key highlights and recommendations from the report. These in the slides are not word for word out of the report, so please refer to that if you want more details. The label Recommendation for District Deliberation is intentional, as Norma and Dr. Flanagan just described. And I'll provide an example of kind of how we think And I'll provide an example of kind of how we think that might play out for you in a few minutes. Forward to the district's work, relative to finding number one here. Part of the district's work in math over the past decade has been a commitment to adjusting conditions and systems that are necessary for student-centered instruction and math learning outcomes. Implementing heterogeneous classes in pre-K to eight, increased inclusion and co-teaching across schools, and redesigned school schedules to provide for MTSS supports are all evidence of this work. Efforts around multi-level high school courses have also been grounded in an attempt to increase access to rigorous instruction for all students. We commend staff and their work to adjust conditions and systems in the math program. This work is necessary, but not sufficient, in achieving student performance gains. This work enables corresponding changes in students' expectations and experience. There are many other factors that influence student outcomes, as we'll discuss in the next several findings.
I know there's a full presentation. Would you mind if we ask questions after each finding? Or would you prefer we?
Let's, let's have the presentation and then keep questions for the end, if you don't mind. Thank you.
So relative to finding two. A curriculum is a critical foundation for instruction, but not a silver bullet. A common curriculum, as Dr. Flanagan noted, enables coherence and consistency of student engagement and learning. A common curriculum enables teacher collaboration around instruction and assessment practices. It is also the key foundation to an effective student support system. That said, no, that said, no curriculum does anything, every, does everything, sorry. There will always be a need for your professionals, the classroom teachers, co-teachers, support staff, and leaders to make adaptations or supplement curricula to meet the specific needs of your student population, your math vision, and your district goals. Differentiation to meet students' needs is necessary, even with a common curriculum, so some variation is expected. That said, Norman, I believe there is currently too much variation in math instruction across the district. There is not yet a coherent vision being implemented. There are regular instances of student-centered instruction with student discourse, use of mathematical practices, and real-world application. But that is not yet the norm across classrooms, schools, and time. In an earlier slide, you saw the draft math vision, which hopefully embodies the staff goals for student learning. Advancing the math program, program to better reflect this vision will result in different expectations for student experience and their engagement in math learning. Finding three. The district currently has recognized quote-unquote "high-quality instructional materials," sometimes referred to as HQIM, for elementary and middle school, that are substantially aligned to state standards and reflect many elements of what your math staff and the broader math education community say is important for students today. These goals include procedural fluency, basically knowing how to apply math algorithms, algorithms, the kind of traditional measure of math success, but also conceptual understanding, math practices, discourse about math, and application to real-world context. There is still, however, substantive work to implement this curriculum consistently in alignment with those goals. In the next year, the math committee will likely explore possible K-eight alternatives that may even better support these goals and staff implementation. There should, however, be a strong and compelling reason to invest in and shift to a new curriculum at those levels. A lot of effort has been put into the existing K-eight curricula, and there are a number of other district initiatives competing for teacher time and attention at those grades. There is currently no common math curriculum in place for pre-K. Your educators are doing substantive work to create productive learning experiences for these students. As I am sure you are aware, pre-K has a particular population and context that needs to be considered when choosing a math curriculum. At the high school, high school staff have been working diligently to articulate and align course scope and sequences, the order of topics, and the general pace of a year, and to develop other resources such as common final exams for the core Math 1 through 3 courses. This is not, however, a common curriculum. Both staff and parents note variability across classes, both at different levels and across schools. A common curriculum would enable educators to focus more on common instructional and assessment practices and work together as a math staff across schools and grades. Finding five, support systems. The district is actively investing in both student support systems and professional development for MTSS. Please continue this work. It is important to have robust student support systems to ensure that every student is ready to learn math each day. It is not as effective to try to remediate math learning after instruction is over. Regarding professional development. While math staff have engaged in regular professional learning over the past decade, it has been disjointed across the district and has not ensured consistent implementation of math curriculum or instructional practices across grades and schools. Continued focus will be needed to support active student engagement with math practices, discourse, collaboration, and productive struggle. Professional learning needs to be sustained over time, collaborative in nature, including across grade levels, to make all this successful. So I'd like to take a moment to play out how an example of how these findings and our recommendations may inform the work of the math committee and the district over the next year. One question that will be at the heart of staff discussions will center on how to provide access to advanced math options while continuing to enhance access for all students. This is a vexing challenge that speaks to differentiation of curriculum at all levels, course pathways from middle through high school, and whether to stick with the multi-level high school course structure. One of the recommendations for district deliberation that Norma and I have included in the report is to consider moving the highs, the core high school math courses, currently Math 1 through 3, to a heterogeneous format, as has been done in the middle school. This would move the district toward ensuring every student can engage with a common curriculum, level of rigor, and learning experience. It would also ensure all students have the same opportunity to access advanced courses later in high school, even as they may need different supports to achieve those goals. Starting with this perspective centers the conversation on equal access to curriculum and instruction, even if a heterogeneous approach is not the final district solution. The recommendation does not imply that all students receive the same supports or take the same pathway, but it should mean that all students have the opportunity and supports needed to achieve your expectations for their math education. Anytime tracking is a feature of an educational program, whether that is through leveling or pathways based on ability or prior experience, some students are prevented from accessing math options. Tracking also reduces the chance that all students will have access to an active and rich curriculum where they develop mathematical practices, application, and conceptual understanding. Whatever you decide is the expected mathematical end goal for every Newton graduate, whether that is calculus, pre-calculus, or some set of advanced math electives. The district program should provide all students the opportunity and the choice to reach that goal. Working through this question will require the district address a variety of elements laid out in the findings. Staff will have to wrestle with current instructional and placement practices, identify professional learning to enact their vision, support, explore research about best practice, consider course pathways, and student course-taking opportunities. We have framed our recommendations to catalyze conversations and encourage continued progress towards your district's commitment to each and every student. Your community is well on its way to articulating your goals for math education and designing a system that gives each and every student the best opportunity to meet those. Thank you.
Before we get into the action steps for next year, did you, did you want to ask Jake and Norma some questions?
Sure. Questions from the committee on what we've been presented thus far? Paul?
Well, a lot of stuff. First, Dr. Nolan, thank you for your overview about how we think about curricula and, and go through our process. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about how and if we're influenced by political forces out in the environment, the national, regional, and the state environment. And I think it was really important for you to set that out in a very clear fashion. And, Dr. Flanagan, thank you for your exposition about what curriculum means, which I think the next time you do it, I'll have it, but it's, because it's, it's very thorough and rigorous, which I appreciate. I don't mean to be facetious, but your final comment that we're well on the way to achieve our goals doesn't seem consistent with everything else you said to me. It really does not. I mean, you've, it seems to me you've basically said that notwithstanding what we know is dedication on the part of our teachers, whether elementary or secondary teachers in the mathematics field, their hard work, their intensity, and everything they're putting into it. We have major flaws in the delivery of mathematics to our students. And you've outlined things that we need to do to fix that, which is healthy. And, and I think you've provided us a good baseline, but it seems to me like we have a long way to go. So it doesn't feel like we're well on our way. Maybe we are in, in desire and direction, but there's an awful lot of work left. So let me just, that's introductory comment. Questions? I'll try to be briefer, Chris. I don't know what you mean by heterogeneous. So it seems to me in any class, classroom, there's, there's a heterogeneous group of students, right? There's always different levels of achievement, there are different ways that kids have to learn, and all the rest. But it seems to me you're taking it further than a typical classroom. It seems to me you're saying that classes should be heterogeneous in a big way with regard to the, if I could just call it native mathematical ability of a group of students. Not within a narrow range, but you seem to be promoting, for the purposes of equity, as you're describing it, a broader range within any given class. And further that you're saying, absent that, the potential for advancement of at least a segment of the students is diminished. Is that what you're saying? And if so, why is it diminished? Is that fair?
It's, it's very, very fair question.
Okay.
So first of all, I would say that, to the closing comment that I made, the foundations that the district has laid are actually very important foundations, right? The systems and conditions sometimes get overlooked. Some people think you can put a curriculum in and all these things will change, but actually by changing the conditions first, you set yourself up for the curriculum to be more effective. So appreciate, appreciate that comment. In terms of heterogeneous, the district is already implementing heterogeneous approach for K-8. Students are mixed in individual classrooms. There is no leveling through K-8. And so what we're recommending is to explore that through the grades. Now, whether or not you land on that, that's totally up to you or not, right? Or there, there is a, you know, potential, many other models that could be implemented. But keeping with that move that the district's already doing and the district's rationale for that, to your, to your question, it has to do with access, right? That typically, when you have levels, students that are, quote-unquote, in the lower levels tend to get more rote instruction, tend to get less opportunity. Now, I'm not saying that that is happening across the district, that is how we, how it's often implemented nationally.
Can I pause here there?
Sure, let me just, let me just make one other comment. And then the diversity of perspectives is actually helpful for student learning. If you get students who both have procedural ability and other ways of thinking about math, whether it's visual, graphically, conceptually, that mix actually is very important to help all students understand mathematics better. It's not just kind of a one way of doing math, and that's the only way.
So is that second point based on empirical studies? In other words, in classrooms where there is a mix of learning abilities or learning styles, cognitive abilities, calculation abilities, all those things, that, that it's mutually supportive among those students towards a better result?
It, it is dependent on a lot of factors related to implementation, but yes.
Okay, and on the, on the first one, the fact that you're saying that tracking leads to, in essence, to further tracking, that people can't break out of the track they're in. How much of that is the way we run those classrooms versus inherent in? Because there's probably some advantages to tracking as well in terms of class management and those other kinds of things. How much is related to some inherent flaw? And we'll call it more tracking, because there's diversity even within a track class, right? So what's your thought on that?
A very, very good question, and the answer is yes. That there are both systemic challenges with tracking, right? That have to do with scheduling, that have to do with, you know, the beliefs about the adults in the system. But then there is also advantages. So one of the conundrums we have, and you all are going to have over the next year or two, is that you can point to studies that say, you know, tracking is, has these benefits and these drawbacks, and heterogeneous has these benefits and these drawbacks. And there is no clear answer to the, the particular strategy in that regard, in terms, in terms of student access, in terms of pros and cons of the benefits.
I get it. The final point I'd make is, I guess what I'm concerned with is, given that uncertainty and the implementation issues and the professional development issues and all the other stuff that makes either system work well or poorly, I'm concerned that you draw the conclusion that equity is dependent on heterogeneity. That's what I'm concerned about. Because you, you reached that from your very first slide, you start with that premise. And it seems to me it's so dependent on how you do either form that it, it, it feels like the tail wagging the dog, the way you've put it.
I can see that. I would say that we, we took that position in part because that has been the position of the district over the past decade. That is then the strategy K-8.
Oh, I know.
Right.
And that's why I'm raising it. It definitely has been the position, and yet the, the results have, the hoped-for equitable, equity results that were inherent in that approach we, we failed to reach. And that might be a-
But I think what we're saying is that that's in part because you haven't gotten to all of the implementation that you need to get to to make that strategy successful.
I think we're going in circles at this one.
And the professional development and the mindset of many of the stakeholders in those situations. And I, I like to combine the access and the equity. I think they, it is a complex situation, it's not one or the other.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Nolan.
I just want to reread finding one that, that ends with, "Resources and tools have not been sufficient to improve student outcomes." So I just, I think we're, we all know we're going to have to tear into this thing all the way, right? So I see you're warming up, so I'm, I'm taking notes.
Thanks. Thanks, Paul. Other questions?
Thank you. I haven't read every word of the larger report. It is pretty detailed, so thank you for, for all the work in doing that. In, in going through the summary, though, of findings, right? If I, if I was to summarize each one, finding one, need resources, finding two, need vision, finding three, need consistency, although K through eight is possibly there. Finding four, need consistency, finding five, need to meet students where they are. I'm paraphrasing, but I was trying to get to the summary. Finding six, need professional development. So having said that, the, it certainly seems like we're long overdue for this review, so, so thank you for doing that. But how would we prioritize what's needed? Is, is a question, and maybe you're getting to that in, in action steps, because there is a lot. And then two other thoughts, one in, in terms of continuing a little bit of what Paul was saying. Is, is there a point in, in, in- Is, is there a point in, in, in K through 12 where tracking starts to make more sense? And I think the, the approach generally has been, you know, in high school at, at some point. But is, is there, is there any data supporting that? Like, does, does tracking make sense in high school? Is it something you would start in middle school? Is it something you don't do at all? I don't know what's out there. So that, that's one thing. The, the other question in, this kind of gets to what I hear from families. Have a child in grade, whatever it is, and either she needs extra support or she's doing incredibly well and, you know, needs extra challenge. And then their, their kids are quite comfortable where they are. But as we go through this, will we be able to articulate to families? Like if you have a, a child who needs support or a super achiever child in math in a certain grade, here's what will be in place to help them hit their potential, whatever that, that potential is. And I feel like when we go through this process of putting together the curriculum, the teaching and professional development, the resources and additional supports, all of that coming together, like that's going to be the key question. And, and every, every family in Newton is going to look at that very personally. Like, how will my child get what he needs or what she needs? So I'm just putting that out there because I, I see the work that's gone into this and, and I have faith that we're going to get to more consistency. We're going to figure out what PD is needed and, and so on. But it will come down to individual students and how, how we're helping them to fly, right? Wherever that's going to take them.
I just want to say that a lot of those conversations that you're, that you were alluding to, we're having right now. You know, and we're talking about building our MTSS system and the support, the support specialists that are needed, particularly at the middle school and high school right now. As you know, we have specialists at the elementary, but not at the middle school and high school just yet. So those conversations are definitely happening. And when I talk about the next steps for next year, we'll talk about, a little bit about what the, the committee decides, you know, in terms of where should we go from here as well.
I just, the language of tracking is so loaded with people's past experience, their understandings. I'd offer the consideration of pathways for students to achieve the math education and vision that you want for them in Newton.
Makes a lot of sense. I will, I'll certainly try and rephrase it. But, so I was talking about pathways.
Yeah.
And, and just as in, in my son's freshman year math class, which was a multi-level class, you know, certainly saw students who kind of discovered their love of math in their, in that class and then moved up a level for, for the next year. And others who kind of continued with the, the standard level and were quite happy. So I, I do understand that having multi-level classes, if, if done properly, can, can help people to kind of figure out a pathway that is different from what they might otherwise have been on.
And to be clear, I introduced that term, so it's on me. And you do have students who are moving as they go through the high school grades into upper levels as they go. The, the challenge with mathematics in particular is that if calculus is your end goal, there needs to be some sort of acceleration somewhere along the way to get there. Because the number of years students have in schools is, if you just take one math class a year, doesn't quite get you there. And that's fundamentally what makes math a little bit different in this conversation than many other subjects. And that, that is the crux of the problem. Because as soon as you accelerate somebody, now you've got a track or, or a pathway that may, that some may not have access to. And that's where the conversation really is going to focus. You know, that, that notion of options for students and how do you ensure access along the pathway?
Any other questions before we continue on Ping and then to Mika?
Thank you very much for this report. And also I'd like to salute to our leadership for start this process. And I may have said a few times already, our curriculum really needs review and serious review. And I, I'm, I'm very impressed in terms of this report. And I certainly appreciate that our consultant, Norman Gordon and Dr. Jacob Foster, happened to know Jacob before. It's, it's wonderful. This is a tremendous step. And, and I, I, I hope this will be a model for other curriculum review. And certainly math is critical. And I don't know if I can over emphasize the importance of, of the math probably more than ever nowadays. And my wife happened to be the coach, the volunteer coach for the MIT adult clubs, gymnastic clubs. And many of her students happen to be master doctor students, you know, engineering and math. And tremendous, and probably half of them from foreign countries. And we all know that fact. And I, I read somewhere saying, and I think the white students and Asian students, and I think you point out that different from other challenges, families, and that, that probably the fact. And the other fact is a culture fact. And I happen to know the data that the Asian students' math achievement is way, way above all other racial groups, including the white students. And just to me, it's almost insane gap. And that, that's also alarming gap. I, I think that, that, that probably is beyond our discussion right now. Even though probably relate to certain way, the homogeneous group and, and the heterogeneous group. And so that, that discussion is very difficult to, to expand at, at this moment. But that's my concern. And I, I have one question, probably it's, you guys noted that the Russian mass. And when I talk to my friends living in Newton, the parents, seems a majority of them have their kids going through the Russian mass. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Russian mass. I cannot speak for that. My daughter took the one summer, the eighth grade, before she go, went to the high school. We said, you know, Amy, you'd better take some Russian mass. I heard all our friends' kids are doing math. She's very tentative. So, okay, okay, just one summer, just one time. And she did do that. And we felt that helped her a little bit. My son did not like to go to Russian mass. We hired a private tutor for probably one year. So they are not outstanding mass. And my son got twenty points shy of perfect score in math. He thought this was tremendous achievement. He posted on the website and his Asian student just laughed at him. What, what are you talking about? We could do the perfect, you know, SAT math score in middle school. So now you're high, you thought this a big deal? Anyway, my point is math is very challenging and critical now. So I think one of the major complaints I heard from parents is the, the math education is not good at all in, 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 in past few years. And I think I, I, I would like to emphasize that. My point here is, you mentioned the last finding is professional development for mathematics instructor has not been coherent or sustained. And I probably would add also not being really stressed. And this is probably a widespread culture issue in this country. When sometimes, you know, leaders or education leaders say, oh, well, my math's not good. It's common joke say, you know, almost accepted or people just pass through. Sounds like math, no big deal. If your math's not good, that's all fine. But, but my concern is here, whether we plan to do a, a strong systematic professional development for our instructors, for the teachers here. If our teachers are not very passionate about the math education, about importance of math, I think a lot of our efforts probably will have failed. That's my concern. A good teacher, a passionate teacher is really, really critical. And certainly I saw that from my kids. If teacher's passionate by the subject, you will really inspire the students. So I, I think this finding, finding six, probably we need to pay a lot of attention to see the teacher will buy in what we're doing here. If they are not convinced, you know, all these efforts probably will not go very far. And that's my concern. And of course, this only, not only math, other subject as well. We could have wonderful ideas, but there are no buying. And this will be fat after few years, you know, old methods will still come back. Or even they never even wholeheartedly adopted these, you know, or, you know, whatever the reforms and new procedures, new curriculum. So, and that's something, of course, I, I noted when I came to this country, you know, even same school, seventh grade, same grade teacher using different materials, you know, to teach the class. I was shocked. I was really shocked. I could not believe that. And my son happened to change one school to the other school in Newton. And he came back, said daddy, I'm learning same stuff I learned last year, talking about math. And of, of course, this might be few subjects, but still. So again, what I'm saying here is there are a lot of ideas which are dying hard. And we have to do tremendous work, but this is important first step. Or not, probably not first step, but this is battle very important. But we really have to keep our efforts and do serious education work to educate ourselves and educate community. And hopefully, you know, Asian parents probably will buy in very quickly if you do the math, you know, curriculum work, if, if they are going to the right directions. And certainly I, I, I heard Paul mention this issue, which is very broad issue, probably beyond the curriculum work, but certainly will also impact the curriculum. Anyway, it's a lot of ideas and I'm very happy we have this tremendous start. And I just hope that we would work together and, and keep our efforts and prepare for a long battle. Thanks.
Thank you, Anping. To Mika?
Thank you. First, thank you for the work. Thank you for initiating this process, Gina. I think the cycle of review, I, I don't get tired of seeing that circle. I think it's, that circle is where we need to live and happily so for the next several years. And thank you to the both of you. The DENTS report is very, it is that, it's a very apt adjective. But it's also, it's just chock full of just good points for us to think about, to ponder. And I know you and your team will spend the next, now to the fall, pondering just that. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the through line that I saw consistent through the report, which is access to, access to pathways of achievement, access to students having access to the curriculum, different classes. And I think for me, that is above reproach. That is an, an unimpeachable concept that I think all of us needs to embrace as a baseline. Each child in this district should have the access to accelerate as far as they want to go. Every single one of them. Asian parents, black parents, white parents, all parents want this for our children, right? So I think that's wonderful that that, what I see is that's the center. I, I see that woven and embedded throughout the report and that's, that's great. That gives me confidence that all of the rest is, is equally as, as thoughtful and, and grounded. Anping did touch on a question that I, I had, which was one of the values of consultancy is that you bring the knowledge and experience of having worked with various districts. And in Newton, we like to think that we have this special sauce to borrow from the superintendent of enrichment to math curriculum, whether that's math, Russian math, mathnasium, private tutors. Is that something that you've seen on a level akin to Newton in other districts that you've worked with? And if so, how does that, what kind of, what, what lessons can you impart for us?
I can just use your good answer to the other one. Yes. I, I think Newton is, districts will look to Newton because they are all grappling with this same concern. And I think, as you mentioned, the access. I'd like to toss in, and maybe that doesn't come out in the report, also the joy of learning mathematics. Because it is, as you said, so central and it is about the joy of learning, right? We want lifelong learners to continue that passion. I think when you look at this deeper dive into the curriculum review, those are some of the questions. What is coming from the Russian math or mathnasium? Where can we find that either in our curriculum or how do we supplement so everyone has access? And I like that you, that's the lens that you're taking.
There's not many districts that I've seen that have the level of outside math participation as you do. I think of the teacher and student surveys, just about half who responded, both, both parent and student said they either are actively or have been in. And I'm not sure we've seen that level in many other places. And in a sense, you know, that, I think it really backs to Anping's conversation about, you know, culture, right? That kind of expectation and setting your students up for success. It also puts you all in a tough position because you have parents that are in a sense accelerating their students outside of your curriculum. Right? And, and then in a sense, they are asking you to pick up where they've kind of accelerated their students. And that puts you in a difficult position where you have some students who still need supports to even get to the X grade level expectation. And you now have students who have moved beyond it. And so, so that is a fundamental challenge that, that I think exists in many places. I'm not sure to the level that we've seen in other, many other places.
So we are special.
We're a little extra, little extra.
Yeah. So there was a, one other thing I'd like to pick out. And this was in your, your presentation, your oral presentation tonight. I sort of got the sense that there was a cost benefit analysis that you were doing for our K to eight curriculum, where the suggestion was that we might not net as much benefit from pivoting from that curriculum that we have in place now going to other district priorities and the fact that it's relatively high quality. Is, is that correct?
I think cost benefit is one way to look at it. It really is more resource and keeping in mind the educators. So there would need to be a compelling reason. We're not saying there won't be a reason. And as Jake mentioned, you're not going to find a curriculum that's going to do everything, right? That's, that just doesn't exist. So elements of the existing curriculum supplemented differently, supplemented in a way that it's currently being supplemented. Um at least K through five, there's different things. So I think it just needs to be looked at. I think you need to listen to the educators, stakeholders. And again, this was just, as we said, to catalyze conversations. Uh the conversations have already started. So there has been some parallel work that's started already. And so some of the action steps are already in action, I think.
I'll just say you summarized that very nicely. Um I'll I'll point back to Anping's second comment, which is the passion of your teachers. You have passionate teachers. The challenge for any math teacher is moving from how they were taught to how to make it more student centered. And so moving away from traditional algorithms, which makes sense to math people who came through a math system where they did very well. To a more visual, a more student discourse, a more application, which is what the uh math learning research is calling for. And what many of your of the the two curriculum you have embody in many ways. That's a difficult transition for adults. And so fundamentally, what we're saying is they need more time to do that well with the curriculum we have. There may indeed be another curriculum that you choose that it does it better. And that's totally great to look for, but it it should be a really good reason to change.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Fleming, do you want to move to the action steps?
Sure, um if you go to the next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
We'll have questions after, that's okay. Okay.
Okay, so um our committee that um did this work this year met one last time a few months ago. And we took a deep dive into the self-study and really kind of tried to pick apart, like if we were to start the work next year. What would the subcommittees need to be? So this is a reflection of the feedback from the educators who are part of that subcommittee. And so as you can see here, there are three major buckets, all focused on the vision. The vision is is something that we're going to continue to center ourselves around because that's what guides all the work that we do for next year. So one group will be working strictly on the curriculum instruction piece. So these, this group will be working to um develop the pilots, how they are implemented. They'll work on establishing teams to vertically align the curriculum, horizontally align the curriculum, and then select, customize, or develop the curriculum. Another group, subcommittee that came out of our discussions with a was a communication committee. This group would be in charge of synthesizing and articulating our progress so that everything is understood by everyone. So that means students, families, um all stakeholders are involved in that piece. So that would be a thoughtful approach to to communication. And then finally, a professional learning subcommittee. These folks will work to identify and select the high-quality PD to support the new curriculum. We've already started that work already. We are utilizing um a combination of DESI's curriculum for math and for math curriculum, their evaluation process. But we're also embedding a lot of the Portrait of a Learner pieces and the values of Newton to make sure that the curriculum is reflective of our values. But also represents the needs of all students, including students that are on IEPs as well as our ELL students. So we've have a lot of collaboration on that piece. Um there will also work to develop a strategic plan for the implementation and then provide avenues for feedback. If you go to the next slide and final slide. So next year, that this is kind of layout in a very short viewpoint of what the work will be. So in the spring, like I said, we've already started to collect curriculum instruction materials that will be reviewed by our math educators. There's going to be a first round review occurring this spring, and I envision it going into the summer. We'll then start working on our selection of our pilot teams in our different schools. Well, pilots will start to begin. And while that is going on, we're going to take a look at the evaluation of the curriculum itself and the selection. And then hopefully in March and May, we'll come to you and identify the budget and professional development needs. So the pilot is one aspect that the curriculum committee will be working on next year. And the other is the actual curriculum development. We're going to once again review our needs assessment that's provided to us um from the self-study. We're also going to re-revisit our curriculum maps. I I mentioned to you, um one of the most powerful experiences that we had during this process was our curriculum crosswalk. Where we took a look at the standards K, pre-K to twelve and kind of assessed how we're doing. We're going to break those back out to make sure that when we do write these curriculums, that that alignment isn't in place. We're going to outline our priority standards, making sure that there's best practices utilized within our curriculum. And then we'll start identifying um curriculum unit of studies with priority standard. Now, we might go with a box curriculum, um but we're all, we're still going to need that Newton touch, customizing it to make sure that, you know, any new educator or any parent can uh pick up that document and know what we value and know what they what they can expect from their their students in terms of their math instruction. Um and then we envision that if there's a need to actually customize and do that unit design, that will happen in April um of next year. And then review curriculum guides with the colleagues. One of the things that's really important in this process, and I want to reiterate over and over, that we want to include our educators to make sure that it makes sense for them. That is something that they they value, that they can work with. So that piece will be embedded every step, whether it's the pilots or curriculum development. We're always going to go back to our educators to see how they're feeling. Um one thing I also wanted to mention um is that we are doing some parallel work with this. As you know, we've talked a lot about building our MTSS systems. So trying to figure out how this math curriculum work falls in line with that. We also talked a little bit about the multi-level work. We're going to continue to analyze the conditions and develop the vision and next steps for the future for both of those components. And I'm hoping in the fall that we can come back and give you uh, you know, some type of update and periodically throughout the year of how we're doing. So that is the work next year and not a whole lot going on. But uh we're we're really committed to the work. I think our math teachers are excited to roll up their sleeves. And we certainly hope that um, you know, we keep coming back you to you with more updates. So that's it for us.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the committee? Okay, sorry, I apologize. Uh so I I have just one question as we're going through this process. And I don't think you said this explicitly, but I'm, I know there's a lot of, yeah, as we're all aware, multi-level and it's, you know, it's an issue. Forefront of mind for a lot of people, there's, I think, a lot of folks and probably a lot of staff wondering, like, when do we get to a decision point there?
Sure. So one thing I want to mention to you that Dr. Roundtree, who's not here tonight, but um extended his apologies for not being here to a family commitment he had to be at. Uh we are working very closely right now with the High School District Curriculum Council, which consists of all the department heads um from both Newton North and Newton South. And um we've met several times this year and we're kind of devising, or having those conversations that's going to lead us to that decision. So for example, we've been talking a lot about what rigor means and coming up with a definition of what that means so that, you know, it's clearly defined. We've also been talking about um the priority standards, how that plays into the development of uh multi-level classes. And then the differentiation, what is that going to look like? Um so that work has been happening right now, a lot of great conversations happening. Um our hope is that in the fall, we can kind of share with you some updates of as to what the thinking is with that. Um but our goal is to um really continue those conversations. I think you'll see the full development of the those conversations in the actual curriculum um development piece. So for example, as we're talking about math, you know, those curriculum guides are going to need to have that differentiation built into the actual guides itself to kind of help educators understand, like, what's a rigor look like um in these classes? We've already started talking about what those learning experiences will look like, what those different levels might. But no, no definite um decisions have been made just yet because we're still kind of exploring the different components of of the work that needs to get done.
Yep.
I just want to also point out to everyone that some pivotal decisions have to be made this fall. And I just want to say, I I see Alex Kraus here, who's department head at South, Jen Laterno, department head at North, and Jen Shore, our K to eight curriculum coordinator. There there has to be some pivotal decision-making because I'm going to anticipate what I think your question is, like, how can you talk about rigor and differentiation and all the pieces? Maybe I'm wrong without knowing sort of what your end game is. But we have to decide, is it algebra for everyone by eighth grade or not? And what is our end game for high school or not? Like, because we backwards plan from there about what rigor means, what at grade level means and what not at grade level means. Or accelerated tracks or not. Uh many districts do this. We've been visiting different districts and we've we've led some of them. I do want to just say that leveling systems is not the math curriculum and that not the math program. So it's a thing we have to address here, but we also have to get a robust curriculum that's aligned and coordinated for all our schools so that we are a school system and not just a lot of different things happening in math. So those things need to get dealt with right away. And that's so, but they're going to happen simultaneously so that we can, you know, by next winter, give you some recommendations because we have to then fund it. Because if we are going to have this conversation and we're right back here where you can't spend any other money except to purchase the stuff, but you can't put any supports in place. We're not going to be able to to do the acceleration and enrichment for advanced students. And we're not going to be able to do the support and intervention for the students below grade level. So I just want to put that out there that we're going to have to make some decisions about the resources and PD that go along with the purchases that Mayor Fuller has already funded for us. So we have some real, we have some real skin in the game, we're able to move. But you're going to hear me show you a five-year breakout of the very incredible detailed recommendations here. What's mapped in this of what's available and what's not? That is a roadmap for the next five years of things that need to be executed for the math department. What does this mean for our Portrait of a Learner and workplace sector needs, right? We're, we're talking about the future of jobs all the time as we lead two high schools and a CTE high school. What they tell us and what parents want aren't always at at in alignment. So we need to bring that to you. And also I'll be bringing to your retreat the curriculum map so you can kind of see what what the current most emergent bleeding need is to me, which is alignment. So that where you go to middle school doesn't dictate your entire math future. Maybe I didn't get it right, Paul, but.
Paul, that was terrific. But what I, what I'm trying to figure out is how you reconcile what you just described with what I heard before, which was a very strong predilection for the sake of equity. To have a diversity, a a wide diversity of of types of students within each classroom. So what, it sounds like you're prejudging the question of levelized classes.
So I worried you would think that from this. I've said that to the consultants, that I was worried you would say that.
That's what finding number one says.
Right.
Yeah, and and uh. I agree with you. It depends on what our end product should be. If 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 it's algebra, then everything short of algebra is mixed classes. And then maybe above that, for the students who want AP, then it's, then it's those students who are tracked into AP. I I don't know. But I I'm trying to figure out which comes first here. And maybe we just have to wait and see. But but I'm. I and and I understand that that the the multi-level classes are currently suffering from the lack of professional development and support and all those things. I'm just assuming you're going to figure out how to do that. And then you're going to conclude that therefore the multi-level class is the way to go.
I wouldn't assume that.
Okay.
This is a legit exploration of what's next. And we thank our consultants for their recommendation.
If that's the way to go, I I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it, but I just don't want it to be.
Yeah, I'm trying not to put the cart before the horse.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Emily?
This is a perfect opportunity for me to jump in and say what I wanted to say previously.
You help.
Thank you, thank you. I just, I, two things. One is I would caution against our using the term, that student is good in math. Because that is exceptionally destructive. Because then there are kids who are, well, then you're not good in math because you're not in the same class that this person is in. So clearly, you're never going to be good at math, which is a total lie. Like, that's not, that's not how math instruction works. And also, there are many different entry points into mathematics. It's not just, well, you've memorized your multiplication tables and you haven't, so clearly you're not good at math, right? Which is what we grew up with. We're going to phrase that. It's how I grew up with it. And and just that this this concept of who's good in math and who's not good in math. We all have the opportunity to be good in math or to love math or enjoy math. But it's just finding those access points that we were talking about previously. And I can't stress that enough. So that's one. And the second thing is I deeply appreciate um the term pathways. Because, you know, e-everyone has their own kiddo in here, and this is my kiddo's experience. Um was that in eighth grade, tracked in a particular track, uh and ended up being in a pre-calculus class, but not calculus. And he minored in math and he's a computer scientist and he codes for a living. So it's not that he's not good at math, he's good at math. But he got sort of stuck in eighth grade as as labeled internally in the district that this is, this is the type of math student he is. And there was zero flexibility to to go up. Or if needed, like going down is a different story that I know previously, like we've been very accommodating that. But being able to jump from one level to another level has been very difficult in the past. Granted, I'm a twenty-six-year-old, so I cannot speak to what's happening now. Now, in the district, it might be slightly different, but um I suspect that some of that is still there. So that's what I wanted to share. Then I wanted to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Rajiv?
All right, just one, one, one last quick comment. You've heard more from us than you hoped to, I think. The um, the the one word that stuck out in the report was uh the use of the word significantly when you were looking at consistency in in math teaching at the high school level across courses and across schools. That's concerning because that seems almost like a prerequisite for before you figure out whether you're looking at pathways or not, or multi-level classes or not. Because if if there is signi-, as a consultant, when you put the word significantly in, that means you you saw something that was glaringly obvious. And so is that something we will try and address while we're working through the rest of the curriculum? You know, changes, planning, et cetera?
In terms of natural.
If if we're significantly uh dispersed in terms of how math is taught at the high schools, that's a problem.
I think that's going to be the work of the review committee next year is, like I said earlier, is taking into account the findings and the recommendations from the self-study and doing a little bit more deeper dive and trying to find some of that common ground. Um but I I all due respect to uh Jake and Norma, these are recommendations. And um we're going to take a careful look at, you know, what, which one of those stand out and are and prioritize those for the group for the rest of the work that we do next year.
Rajiv, if I may also respond, the governor's graduation um committee may also have some statewide implications because she's asking the question, what does a Massachusetts diploma actually mean? And so I just, I want to say that that's in the offering as well. So competency determination may have new determinations for math and ELA. So all of that's going to be in the blender when we're having those conversations. And I too need our high schools to have uh coursework that is meaningfully the same. And that doesn't mean uniform, and I want to make sure every North and South teacher is hearing me right now. It's not a cookie cutter process, but we should be able to say these standards, these these resources, these supports.
Fully agree with you. If but ma- Math one CP should have some level of consistency, maybe in in terms of what's being covered.
Agreed.
And if if we don't have that, again, going back to what Gina has been working on. It it's very hard to even say whether our students in multi-level courses versus, you know, kind of single level courses are are doing better consistently or not.
You are one hundred percent right.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Right, let's move on to our next discussion item, which is uh the ELL department update. I think we are very unlikely to get through the full agenda this evening, given uh the time. So I would just ask our members to please keep your questions focused uh to for the presenters. Thank you.
Yes.
Is it okay for LPAC to go first?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Just they've been waiting and.
Right. So this is Allison Levitt. She is our Director of English Language Learner Programming. And she's going to introduce our LPAC leadership parents. Welcome, parents. Go ahead, Allison.
Hi, um I would like to introduce the our co-presidents, Angie Kim and Lee Ying, who are parents in our program. And they run our English Learner Parents Advisory Council.
Hi, everyone. Sorry. Hi, everyone. My name is Angie Kim. I am one of the co-chairs and co-presidents with Lee Ying. I am a second-generation immigrant uh member of this community. I have been part of Newton, the Newton School Program with El- the elementary school here, and now I'm a middle school parent. And I have seen firsthand how important um LPAC is to our community members. I think Lee Ying, if you want to give a quick introduction for yourself before we start.
Yep. Thank you, Angie. Hi, everyone. My name is Lee. I moved to Newton in year 2021 with my daughter. At that time, my daughter is a five, a fifth grade. Now she's already in Newton South High as a ninth grader. So yeah, it's all my, my family. Thank you.
Can I just say that Lee also served on our strategic planning committee? And so I just wanted to recognize you, Lee, for your wonderful contributions to our work there.
Thank you.
I realized I was on mute still. So if you, for those who are not familiar, LPAC stands for English Learner's Parents Advisory Council. And it's still in its baby state, but we're very trying, trying very hard for it to continue to grow. Okay. And we talk about who we are. We are current and former parents of students who are in and were in the Newton Public School ELL program. Our goal is to collaborate with the school and also help the district improve our ELL program and to help the integration process for our ELL families. One of our key focus is to create a network for ELL families to be able to share information, ask questions, and to just find community when they're in a new country or even just in a new state moving here. One of our big focus that we like to do with our families is to remind them that their voice matters. And we try to actively communicate with the ELL department. And we are, have discussions with the PTOC, which is the Parent Teacher Organization Council. We also recently just did a follow-up with DESI and questions about how LPAC is communicating and how their ELL families are being helped within Newton Public School. We like, we have shared our experience and gave them feedback. And they were very interested and gave positive feedback to us as well. Our current community has 834 students in the ELL program. And we have over 12,000 student families that require language assistance. And which means that they either require interpretation or they need translation in the documents that are being sent home. For many of our families, English is not the dominant language at home. If you can look at the chart that is displayed, you can see where the needs are currently. Where you can see second grade has over 121 students that are in the ELL program. And the numbers go down because in the ELL program, the students are there actively. And then it fluctuates. But of course Allison will continue, uh, tell you more about it. Our meetings, we hold four to five meetings through the school year. And what we like to do is, we like to make sure that our topics that we shared during our school, during our meetings are topics that the parents would be curious about, would have concerns about, or would just like to know. So topics that we've shared in the past. And we kind of like to do during the time, like when school opens or when school starts, we talk about my school bucks, we talk about frontline, we, I mean, we talk about Aspen. We talk about the MPC gift policy during the holidays. We like to share about holiday summer things to do. We also talk about camps. And something that would be great is, just like if our math curriculum, if there's an update on it, we like to share what those changes are so that people are, people who may not understand have a slight understanding. And during our meetings, we also ask parents that if they need interpretation, that it is there and is provided. We've had guest speakers from Newton Free Library. We've had New North High School Counselor come to talk to our high school students and, well, high school student parents to explain to them about what financial aid is, how students are applying when they come into high school. We've also talked to financial advisors for our junior seniors that are ELL students because the parents have probably just moved here and doesn't understand, you know, how that process works. So we've had NC directors come. We've also had our lovely school committee, committee members come to our meetings. And we are very lucky because our next, next and final meeting, we're actually going to have our superintendent Nolan and Nolan coming. We're very excited for that. Something that we also like to do that's been a very big hit is we have potluck. And what's amazing is that we have families bring dishes from their home country, whether it's a dessert dish or just a meal, like a side dish, they bring in, they share with us. And it's good home cooked meals and tastings that you get to experience that you may not be able to enjoy or try out. So something that we like to share out to our school committee members is June 5th, 6:30 at Newton Ed Center, we're having our final potluck, final LPAC meeting. We like to welcome you all, either in person, but that would be great, or even virtually. And that's who we are. So if you have any questions or anything.
Thank you both very much. Questions, comments from members? Tamika?
Just want to say thank you for representing LPAC and the LPAC families for as many years as you've done. It's, uh, it's commendable and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Rajiv?
Yeah, I, I want to echo that. Angie, if I remember correctly, you've, you've been in the leadership of the LPAC since the day it was founded.
No.
Yep. She can't get out.
Four years.
Years. We had, we had, we had leadership before then, but yes.
Yeah.
Again, much appreciated. And, and the very quick question, and I think Allison may get to some of this, but what, what, what would you, what else would you be looking for in terms of support from NPS and the school committee?
I think it's the constant, just reassuring the families that, you know, I think it's a cultural thing that talking to the educators, talking to the school may place a bad image on their child. So parents are very hesitant sometimes, not all, but some parents are. So it would be great if, if any of, like the information that's out there, you know, use us so that we can share it to the community members. Because it's like we're the cushion kind of to the, the families where they can comfortably ask. And, you know, share even that, the school committee, committee meetings, that there's interpretation. Because I think there would be more families that would like to pay attention and know what's going on if that was an option that was provided. And I don't know if the school committee does that.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you both very much. And why don't we move to the ELL department?
Yes. Bye, guys. Thank you. Hi, this is the, I'm Allison Levitt. I'm the Director of English Language Learning Programs for Pre-K 12 for the Newton Public Schools. Online with me are two assistant directors, Lauren Harrison and Yan Shen Lucky. And we're here to talk about our two, two pieces. And I'll go over demographics in a minute. We're here to talk about the preliminary report from our tier focus monitoring and about changes we need to make to the, to meet the new competency determinations for the state. So.
I do want to say that's a Department of Education audit of ELL services, tiered focus monitoring, in case anyone doesn't know that.
What other people would call a program review, to give it a fancy name. So just quick demographics of our, of our program. As of last Thursday, we had 834 students. I think it maybe was 831 or 837 today. I can't quite figure it out. We have students coming in and out. They are in all the schools in Newton and are supported by 42 ELL teachers. And we have another additional three, three and a half FTE of general ed teacher who help to support students particularly at the high school. We have 40 languages spoken in our program, though in the annual report, the number was a little over 70. It's a, it's a smaller number in our program. And right now our major languages are Spanish, Chinese, Russian, Hebrew, Japanese, Korean, and I think Portuguese is missing from there. So Hebrew has moved up to be one of the top seven this year. A reminder, our program is an SEI, a Sheltered English Instruction Program. There are three models of ESL you can have in the state. The other two are either dual language or bilingual. We're not a school system that's set up with a majority language. It would be very difficult to do those here. So we have, our program means that we have two pieces of our program for the school district. One is sheltered content instruction, which is what's happening in the general education classroom for students. All of our teachers are expected to have a sheltered English instruction endorsement, though many of them took it eight years ago, so we're going to have to work on that. And we also have the English as a Second Language portion, which is taught by our English as a Second Language teachers. Last year during our self-assessment, we determined that we really needed to have more administrative staff to focus on these two different pieces of our program. So we added Yan Shen Lucky at the end of this last year to help us. Lauren is focusing on that sheltered content instruction. And Yan Shen is really focusing development curriculum. So we had tiered focus monitoring this year. It is a six-year cycle for ELL. I don't know what it is for other pieces. This is a program review from the state. This year is actually the year of the review, but last year was the big heavy lift. It was our self-assessment. We had a fight over the number of hours we thought we spent on it. I said 200. Other people said it was more, so I said 200 plus. We spent a lot of time last year collecting, organizing and uploading documentation related to every policy procedure and accountability across 11. And we had to review 18 student records to make sure that we were compliant. All of that is uploaded, hundreds of documents. And this year they came back last month and they interviewed over two days a range of stakeholders, including our LPAC parent group, principals, general educators, some ELL staff, all of us in our office and Gareth Honig in our ELL office. And what they have given us today, and I'm going to go over, is preliminary draft findings. I'm going to respond to them. They will come out with a finalized report towards the end of the school year, which may have some corrective action that I may need to put forth. I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm going to have to, but we're going to see where we are, knock on wood. So we basically had two, three major findings. But I'm going to talk about, Dr. Nolan told me I should talk about what we were given commendations on. We really, in our conversations with DESI, they felt that our department really did a great job of having a clear department structure and focus. We really have cleared up our, our teacher roles and have our teachers focused on English language development, that our staff felt very supported and valued for their expertise. Our LPAC really noted for the state that we have strong student-teacher relationships. The parents and families felt very supported by our staff. We have a really strong, and, and we worked on that this year quite clearly as a district-wide shared response to families. ELL students don't just belong to us, they belong to every teacher and administrator in the district. We've done a lot of ongoing professional development aligned for the new ELL curriculum that we are going to need to revise. And we have really effective implementation of interpretation and translation services for our families. So our first takeaway was SEI endorsement. We have, as of today, nine teachers without the SEI endorsement in all of Newton Public Schools. Why we got the finding, I don't know, but I have gone back to them and explained to them what, what our response to this is going to be, that unlike most districts, SEI endorsement is, is a requirement for being a teacher, a core academic teacher in Newton. It makes it much easier for me to hold teachers to getting the endorsement. Every fall, HR and in conjunction with HR, we list any teacher who's missing it and give them information on how to get it. And right now that number is already outdated since Thursday. We have nine teachers in the process of obtaining their endorsement. They all should be done before the end of the school year. The next one was about benchmark requirements. ELL students are required to take the access test in January that measures their level of proficiency in reading, writing, speaking and listening. At the end of that, they are given a benchmark score by the state with some magical math formula that I'm glad I don't know. And they are told what score those students are expected to reach next year. So when we just got our access scores, we know which students didn't meet their benchmark score. And we've gotten sort of a finding that we have not communicated that students didn't meet those benchmark scores. And when they don't meet them, we're required to develop an English language success and our English learner success plan. And those are goals. We have, we need to figure out how to communicate those goals to all of those general education teachers. Working with Maria Colby with MTSS, we're going to be eventually putting that into our MTSS management system. One of the things we're really trying to do and thinking about all of the things that we're doing is how do we bring our systems into the general systems for the district? So the teachers aren't required to figure out 15 different ways to keep track of students. So we, we have a plan and we've, we've given them some information back that we will be making sure that that gets into that system and that we get that into PLCs and team meetings for the beginning of the year. And our last finding is one which really, for us, goes into a lot of the changes we're having within teaching and learning and really looking forward to the new Director of Professional Learning. We have been cited for not having generalized classroom teachers using enough sheltered instruction techniques and looking at instructional strategies for ELLs. And additionally, we've been noted for not having things like language objectives being used by classroom teachers. So we knew that last year when we did the self-assessment, which is why we brought Lauren on to just focus on sheltered English instruction. And she's been working in a number of schools this year with classroom teachers to look at how best to support ELL students in the general education classroom, particularly at the high school level. And she has also been working with the curriculum coordinators to make sure that when we, as we bring in curriculum and as we standardize curriculum across the district, that we have those English language supports, like language objectives, vocabulary supports in that curriculum for every teacher across the district, that we're not leaving it up to individual teachers to put those together. The last thing, and then I can take any questions, that I wanted to talk about was competency determination. So we've all talked about that here. I know you guys have talked about that we've changed from having the MCAS test as the competency determination. We are going to have to make a change around ELA for next year. That is going to require me, I'm going to have to reallocate some staff. I've had to do that from my budget to help provide ELA courses for our students at the high school. So we have, we have a couple of issues. One is every junior and senior next year in our program needs to be in an ELA class. And that was not the norm for us at the high schools. Our program was set up that students stayed in ELL and when they graduated from ELL, they entered an ELA class. When we went to go look at this, when competency determination change was happening, we realized that in most school districts, students who are level three and above tend to take both an ELL and an ELA class. So we're going to move towards that. But we will always have juniors and seniors who are foundational level, who are beginner students that are going to need to take an ELA class to be able to graduate now. And so we actually are going to need to add that additional FTE. And I'm working with the department heads at North and South to determine what is the curriculum for that course. It's going to be a big change. So. And, and that's all my information.
Put this in the, I just needed you to know category about competency determination and ELL.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Allison, Lauren and Yan Shen. Is there questions from the committee?
Quickie.
Yes, Paul.
How many students are going to fall in that category?
I think at, at probably somewhere at both North and South, around 10. I haven't, we're.
10 total or 10 each?
10 each. It's going to be a full class. We're going to have to do a sub-separate class for it.
And that's just for the recently arrived kids?
That could be kids who have been here. That could be kids who have been here, could be recently arrived, who've been here a year or two, who are still working at a foundational level.
I mean, my understanding was that maybe this is wrong, that ELL kids, after they've been here a while, actually do, did better on the MCAS than, than the state averages.
I don't know that off the top of my-
We had significant growth for, for ELL because of other SEI changes that Allison and her department made. I mean, the trick is, let's say you have a relative newcomer who needs to master 10th grade standards of, of English language content. So there it is, right? It's not like scientific concepts that you can maybe translate for students and scaffold, it's the English language itself.
Our previous increase in MCAS scores was due to changing from sub-separate math and science classes to going into co-taught math and science classes at both North and South.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks for presentation. Just curious, have we seen increase or decrease of English language learners past few years?
I'm sorry, what kind of students?
Number of years.
The number of students overall has stayed relatively the same. Our makeup of students is changing, given, given the climate, but yeah.
Any kind of specific changes?
We are, we have seen less students coming from Guatemala, new students coming from places like Guatemala, things like that, yeah.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren and Yan Chen. Take care.
Okay, let's move on to our next item, which is an update from CPAC.
Just would like to thank the school committee for not bumping us. Seriously.
I also want to point out that Ani also sat on our strategic planning committee. This is just the parade of, of people who participated, so thank you for that.
Well, people who end up at school committee are people who end up being involved. So I am Ani Ross Scrub. I am a CPAC board member at large. I'm here with Eliza Spalding here in person, and then Sarah Rafferty Swartz, who is on Zoom. Those two are two of our co-chairs. Our third one couldn't be here, and so they will help out with Q and A. And again, I just want to thank the school committee, thank Dr. Nolan for having us here. So CPAC, per Massachusetts laws, every school committee has to have, oh, we're in charge of it, awesome. Every school committee has to have a CPAC to help advise the school committee on matters that are relevant to the education safety of students with disabilities. We are supposed to meet regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, the development, and evaluation of special education programs, and also to cooperate with the district to put on an annual basic rights workshop. So these folks are this past year's CPAC board, as well as other key roles. I want to thank everybody who served. It's just, it's, it can be a big, it can be a big lift, so we really appreciate the members who stepped up to be on the board. We did have a vacant position of liaison coordinator. We hope to fill that next year, as that's something that really helps us coordinate and further the work that we do. I also want to thank Barry Greenstein for being our CPAC liaison to the school, the school committee liaison to CPAC. Really want to thank him for his advocacy and partnership for students with disabilities over the past year. CPAC has a lot of liaisons. We try to get one for each school. We do have a couple of open positions. We also, again, want to thank all of our liaisons for their service. They're really critical in helping us coordinate our work advocating for students with disabilities. So this past year's CPAC did a family survey, and we asked them, what are your priorities? Rank these priorities. And these were the five highest ranked priorities. So the parentheses, the number in parentheses that you see, that percentage, those are the, that's the percentage of respondents who rated that particular priority as high priority, which was the highest that they could rate. So the five top priorities, budgeting and staffing for highly inclusive, you know, or inclusive, high-quality special education services. The second one was bullying and discrimination against students with disabilities. The third one is creating a sense of belonging. The fourth was implementing the new IEP form, elevating student voices, deepening IEP conversations. And the fifth one was addressing accessibility gaps in our schools. And this is not just for the general ed curriculum. This is for all aspects of a student's experience in Newton Public School, including field trips, classrooms, playgrounds, like everything that a child in general education that doesn't get special education services should be able to access, we want the kids with disabilities to be able to access as well. The school committee keep these priorities in mind as they are planning, you know, for the next academic year. So what did we do this year? What does CPAC do? What do we do? So we did the family survey. In addition to doing that, we worked towards improving transparency. We really value our partnership with the Office of Student Services, the superintendent and the school committee, and we're always working on cultivating those relationships. So we've had regular meetings, student services, we stay in regular contact with Dr. Nolan, whether that's through meetings or emails. We'll shoot her emails sometimes and ask questions. The other thing we did is we developed new norms for our meetings with OSS to, you know, encourage a collaborative partnership. We have given advice on policy and practice. So for instance, at the beginning of the year, the new policy on electronic devices, we gave feedback on that. We gave feedback on, you know, the financial guidelines for the parent groups. We collaborated with the Office of Student Services to develop internal guidance and a checklist to make field trips more accessible to students. Sometimes field trips are not always accessible, and we really appreciate and support NPS's efforts to make sure that these special, special occasions that the students really enjoy are able to be enjoyed by all students. We also have given feedback and advice on the implementation of the new, the new IEP, just, you know, getting our feedback from parents and passing that along. So getting feedback and passing that along and advocacy is a really big part of what CPAC does for these, you know, students with disabilities and their families. We often hear things in our open board meetings, over our listserv, which we have, but also in private conversations that we may have, either private emails that get sent to the CPAC email, or just conversations we have out in the community, we hear things. And when we hear things, we like to communicate that to the district. So that is one way that we provide support for our families is through these open board meetings and through direct conversations. We view ourselves as a conduit that facilitates communication and connections where appropriate between parents and the district, and also among parents themselves. So other work that we did is we represented students with disabilities on these NPS committees. So the anti-abelism committee, we had two members on that. Portrait of a Learner, a number of our, our members, board members participated in that. As Dr. Nolan said, I was on the strategic planning committee. We also provide parent education. We organized three presentations in, you know, in concert with Office of Student Services. The three things we did, we did our basic rights, using, you know, the Federation for Special Needs that we do every year. We also had people from Department of Developmental Services come and do, they did a webinar explaining what services do they do, how do you apply, how is DDS structured? And that was actually very well attended. I think we had like 75 people. It was a lot of people showed up, and there were a lot of good questions. People just didn't know how it worked, and so that was very helpful. And then just this week, we had Nadine Gabb come and give a presentation, you know, let's talk readings. So we partnered with Casey's office, you know, to make those things happen. The last thing we did was we revised, it's just this week, we revised, I mean, it's been a process, but we voted on it this week, we revised our bylaws. We hadn't updated our bylaws in eight years, and so we needed to update them to reflect the current work of CPAC, like how CPAC works. So the biggest change that we made, there were little things that we did, you know, making things more specific. The biggest change we made was to make terms now are going to be two years, and that's to help with continuity. And we also gave specific board positions, specific responsibilities to better support our work. So what are our goals for next year? So we want to continue to offer perspective to the school committee and to Newton Public Schools on the needs of students with disabilities, especially when you're developing policies and practices. We would like to be included early in the process. We would like to be proactive rather than reactive. We think it's more effective, it works better, everybody's going to get along better. So that's, that's one of our goals, is that you guys can use us as a resource, and we want to be a resource, and we want to give that feedback and that support. We want to continue to develop our collaborative partnership with the Office of Student Services and Newton Public Schools, and support Newton Public Schools in expanding anti-abelist practices, both through our committee participation, which we did this year. I'm sure there's going to be more opportunities for committees coming up. We want to make sure we have a voice in those committees. We appreciate, you know, that we've been asked to be on these committees this year. And we want to continue seeking and elevating disabled voices and parent feedback when urgent issues arise. Sometimes things do come up, and they come up in our meetings, you know, that we have with Office of Student Services, we'll bring them up. We want to make sure we build upon and expand our community relationships and continue providing support to our families through education, our open board meetings, but also through our one-to-one contacts that we make in the community. So what do we want from you all for the next year, right? What are we, what are our asks? So one of the things that is going to come up in the next year is that a lot of you all are going to be turning over. And some of the folks who are turning over are the folks that have the most experience with our community, with students with disabilities. Just as a reminder, just over 18% of Newton Public School students, you know, have an IEP or a 504. This is not a little niche community. This is a big part of the students, the student population, your constituents, the parents who vote for you, the kids you're educating. So we would ask school committee in the next year, especially with all these new folks, if you would consider rotating attendance at our open board meetings, just so you get an exposure to us, you get to know us, we get to know you, you get to hear some of our concerns, and it just, we think that'll, again, foster that collaborative relationship that we want to maintain and improve and continue having. In the interest of priorities, you know, time, I want to prioritize our requests for Newton Public Schools. So the first thing that we would love it if NPS did is to update the special education program guide. It has not been updated in many years. It used to be available online. I think it's not even available online. Updating this would be very, very helpful for our families, so they know what programs are available in district. So when they're thinking, when, when the discussion about placement comes up, they know what the in-district options are. I mean, I've looked at that document in the past, and it, it, it's very, very helpful. We would ask that you update that and make it available again. The second thing, that's sort of our second sort of big priority, is that, you know, we know Dr. Nolan loves data, we love data too. One of the things I tell my students at BCS, you can't make good decisions without good data. And we would love publicly available good data on every facet of the experience of Newton Public Schools' students with disabilities as they move through the system, because that will help us make good decisions, it'll help us advise, it'll help you all make good decisions, it'll help the district make good decisions. So we'd ask that. We also would ask that, in the spirit of fostering communication, is that we would like to be able to leverage Parent Square to facilitate communication among parents and between CPAC and parents. We do have a listserv, not everybody's on that listserv, not everybody knows about that listserv, but this can help foster a deeper sense of belonging that our parents are, you know, our respondents were concerned about, a deeper sense of belonging among parents of special education students. It's going to help them feel like part of the community. And in addition, occasionally, the Office of Student Services asks us to communicate things to our members. This just came up in a meeting where Mara and Melissa asked us, can you please tell your membership to respond to their ESY programming? And we were like, great, we'd already just had our open board meeting two days ago, so we sent it out on the listserv. If we could have been able to communicate that through Parent Square, that would have been, you know, it would have had a broader reach, it probably would have been even more effective. This was a message that is helpful coming from us, just because it's reiterating the message that was coming from Office of Student Services, where we were saying, no, you're not going to be penalized if you say we're not coming to ESY. You know, we were trying to communicate that. We'd asked a lot of questions, made sure to communicate that to parents, so they would respond and say, this is a planning thing. So if we could be able to leverage Parent Square, that would be incredibly, incredibly helpful. So some of our other requests, you know, again, I mentioned this earlier, proactively loop in CPAC when you're coming up with policy and practices. Anything's going to, you know, impact the students that we are advocating for. Continue discussions around a joint speaker series and potential NSF funding. We had started planning that this year. I think that we want the next year's board to continue working with the Office of Student Services on that. Share an update on improvements to oversight of the special education banned transportation. Share the new field trip guidance and checklist with CPAC families. That is something that, you know, we worked on this year, it's being implemented. I think it's really helping, but I think there's always going to be tweaks and feedback, and I think it's going to be really helpful for families to be able to access that. Sometimes, I know my own experience, families don't always know what to ask for for field trips, even if it's your own kid, you get there and you realize something's not accessible. That happened to us at a field trip this year. So, you know, making that more broadly available. New IEP trainings on the new IEP form, the new IEP process for parents. The last one was in September. I think it would be really helpful in the fall to have some more training, so parents will kind of know, how did this process change? What does it look like now? What does the form look like? How are the things that they're doing change? And then including CPAC in the full rollout of the anti-abelist curriculum, the getting to know you and me curriculum. So we just want to close by giving a snapshot from our CPAC awards. This is something we do every year to recognize staff who support students with disabilities, parents nominate them. As of this morning, we've had 122 nominations. And so this is an example of one nomination that we got, you know, exceptional dedication, creativity, and warmth in supporting students' learning and emotional well-being throughout the year, going above and beyond to create an inclusive and encouraging classroom where every child feels seen and valued. Her thoughtful communication with parents and willingness to adapt to individual student needs have made a lasting impact on her family. And then this family that nominated is very grateful to this instructor. So, you know, we want, this is why we feel like we can have a collaborative partnership, is because these are the people that are working with our kids, these are the people that are working in the district. You know, we advocate for them, often our educators are also advocating for them, and so we just like to recognize them. So that is, that's all we have for our presentation. We thank you for your partnership, and we welcome any questions or discussions.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation and the, the annual report you included with the survey data, that was great. Thanks for all the work you do. As, as a special education parent, it's, it's super meaningful. So why don't we take questions from members? I saw Barry, then Tamika.
Hi, thank you. I was going to ask what we can do to help you, but I think you clearly articulated that. So instead, I will just make a plug for the point that you made, which is for current school committee members and future school committee members to pop in and out of their monthly meetings. I'm pretty sure I've attended all but one that I missed last time, and they can be long, but they're important in, in being aware of what's going on. And there's a lot that was brought to my attention that I was not aware of, and it enabled me to come back and ask different questions and hopefully successfully advocate for needs of, of things that I was not aware of. So I just want to make a plug for that, and you don't have to answer this question now, but I realize I just kind of popped in and started showing up, and I didn't ask how you wanted to interact with me, or how best to interact with you. So if you have feedback on how you would like your school committee liaison to be prepared for your meetings, or how you would want them to bring that information back to the school committee, I think that would be great to know, because, you know, as a new member, when I started, and this is not a comment to anybody, I was- and this is not a comment to anybody, I wasn't given any sort of guideline. It would just said, you're the liaison and it matched well with what I was interested in. So it made sense, but I just showed up and then started talking. So if there's a better way to do that.
So did I, Barry.
I haven't stopped.
Same.
So if there's a better way, I just, I'm, I'm open to feedback myself. I'm still here, obviously, but I think it might just be nice to also just maybe put that in writing on what your expectation is for the liaison from school committee.
Just wanted to respond quickly and say, I really appreciate that, Barry. And I think in a lot of ways, you've modeled for us what a really successful collaboration is. And so I think we can put some of that down on paper. What I really valued about your participation is that you came, you were present, you listened. And you were also candid. You brought issues to us that you felt like were pertinent to our community. So I think that kind of dialogue is really critical.
And if that's something you'd like to follow up on with the committee, I would just say, feel free to send the committee your thoughts on that point. In long meetings, they've got nothing on us, Barry. Tamika, go ahead.
So that was actually the point that I wanted to pick up on or the thread I wanted to pick up as well. As the person who coined the phrase, school committee liaison, CPAC liaison, and really put a lot of thought into creating this system of liaisons for LPAC, for our Metco families, for our CPAC families. I will share with you folks, as I don't think it's clear, but my vision, at least at that time as chair, was for the liaison to be a point of contact, not for the liaison to be the only contact. And so I think it's, it's crucial that the school committee does cycle through, other members cycle through to hear the perspectives of the families in CPAC. And that was always the component of that role. So I think a simple way for us to achieve that goal might be for us to have some type of signup process where we commit months out of time. We put it on our calendars and we say, I raise my hand to attending the June 27th meeting. Please don't do that. But, you know, I think, I think that's a way to ensure that there's some level of engagement and accountability on our end, because I think we would all welcome that.
And I do like that we, I mean, I think we want the rotation for sure. And I think it's also valuable for us to have sort of a consistent point as well. Because I know at times we've reached out to Barry with questions or concerns as sort of our, oh, here's our point person. Sometimes that can be helpful. And also, you know, the continuity helps build relationships. But yes, we do want, because I mean, any of you who have, you know, some of you I know have children who receive special education services. You know, you know, your own child's experience. You don't, I mean, I did not know about other people's experiences and, and it's been, you know, you learn a lot. So.
Other questions?
I have quite a few. So if someone else has a quick one, they can go before me.
Probably my went a little bit quicker. Here are five highest priorities for responders. I'm a little bit curious about the number four. New IEP form. Variating STEM voices and deepening IEP conversations. So are you talking about the official IEP form or create something?
Well, so the, the form is new. They've rejiggered, the state has rejiggered the form. All the content is the same. It's just like how it's presented is a little bit different. So you have to, as a parent, go through like with a fine tooth comb, like line by line to be like, okay, this accommodation, is it still, you know, the new one? But part of what, and I don't know about other districts, but NPS has also kind of changed the process. I don't know if the state has, you know, recommended that. But the process has, you know, there's always been parent input, but now they have kind of formalized soliciting parent input. So like my family, my husband and I would always send our parent concerns, like three pages, single spaced, you know, to our team lead ahead of time. Most families don't do that, you know, you do. Yeah. Most, most families don't do that. And so, because we wanted to in the IP ahead of time, even if nobody looked at it, we wanted it documented. Well, now the process of soliciting parent concerns is formalized. Families get a Google Doc, a Google form that they're supposed to fill out. Just the way they're, the kids are getting involved is a little bit different. You know, I, I feel, I've only been through one process. It's been a while since I've been to the new, the, the sort of orientation. But it is supposed to put the focus on what the student wants, especially as they get older. Like what does the student want? Less like, what do the parents want for the students? But what is, what do the students want? But also to get from the parents, like, well, what are your concerns? So we can address those in the meeting. So there's a lot of sort of new stuff about that. And I think, you know, we do the survey, you know, parents didn't know that, well, what does this look like? How's it, you know, maybe now with the year, people are a little more familiar, but people who had late IEP processes, we were still hearing from them, like, what is this Google form? Did everybody get this Google form? Yes, everybody got this Google form, just they didn't realize this is part of the new process. So, you know, that's, that was, I think, a you know, a priority of like, well, what is this? What's going on? How is this going to impact our process?
Just, just quickly, a follow-up question for those families who recently immigrate to this country, you know, and they have language challenges. Are there any ways to help those families? And, and you know, they might be a little bit more tentative, not only language issues, but also culture issues. Just curious to see if you have those special ways to help them. Thanks.
I mean, I believe the district, right, is supposed to provide support for families who need that kind of language support in meetings, right? Yes. Yeah. So that is available to families, whether or not they all know that, I'm not sure.
We have quite an extensive process on Ping for allowing that to happen. The parents just simply need to make people aware. And our Office of Family Engagement has also prioritized that kind of outreach proactively to families, especially newcomer families.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that proactively, because sometimes you do need to reach out. And again, there, there's a lot of barriers, especially for the families who are trying to settle down here. They have other issues to, to, to be concerned. So.
And I know this is something Casey's brought up in our meetings with her, and I know she's very sensitive to the cultural issues behind families, maybe not wanting to get their kids evaluated or not knowing, you know? So I, I know Office of Student Services is, that's a big concern of theirs too. I know Casey's on.
Casey is here. I don't know if you want to add anything, Casey?
No, I think Ani represented that pretty well. Thank you.
Thanks. Rajiv?
Ani and Eliza, thank you very much. This is always an instructive read and especially to see how things may have shifted in the last several years. So several things. First, I cringed when I heard you say program guide, because this has been an issue for years, going back to when I was one of the co-chairs. And I, I still don't understand why it, it is such a significant challenge. And I think about a month ago, I forwarded, I had saved to a parent who was looking for it.
Like 2018 or whatever.
Yes. So like, keep fighting the fight on that, but it's, it's just very odd that for, this predates Casey, that we have had this issue where a program guide with well-defined citywide programs simply cannot be out there in any consistent way. So that's a comment. It's, it's a, it's a very unhappy comment because we're several years into this and this should just not be an issue. So, so that's one. The the other thing I was wondering about is the speaker series, because traditionally I think there have been more than three speakers. And there's no shortage of topics for special ed families. So have there been challenges with getting the NSF grant? And is there any way the school committee can assist with that?
So Casey and others may be able to chime in on this topic. I believe it was about mid-year. Is that right, Casey? Where we really started to dig into the idea of, okay, a shared speaker series. And that's not necessarily something CPAC and the Office of Student Services has pursued before. We have had certainly moments of collaboration when bringing educational opportunities to the community. But a lot of times in the past, CPAC has pursued those opportunities independently. So this was really the first time we tried to come together in an organized fashion to have a speaker series. And I think we look at the talk with Nadine Gabb as, as sort of like, right, a first step. And I think we hope to continue that next year. Right? Yeah.
Yeah. If I could just add a couple of things, this actually stemmed from a discussion on efforts to expand the CPAC membership. CPAC had shared with us that they would love to see more families who have students receiving special ed services involved. And so we figured, let's speak to the needs, what we're hearing, what the directors are hearing, team facilitators, team specialists, and also parents are sharing with us in terms of having a space to meet other families with students who have similar needs, connecting on anything from, how do I make sure my student also gets invited to the classmates' birthday party? To what are some inclusive fitness options, things like that. And so we thought, well, if we have a speaker series and create events where folks can come together and not just learn alongside each other and share knowledge, but also to actually meet each other. So that's where that stemmed from. And I think, Rajiv, you asked about funding, maybe? We did apply for a grant for NSF, but then found out that the speaker that we wanted is actually being brought into Newton already this summer. So we pulled the grant and then we were lucky enough to get speakers who did not cost anything, which was great for us. So I, I do hope to see more of that. I know that some of the leadership may change next year, but whomever comes on board, we're hoping to still partner in the same fashion.
That's good to know. And I guess the other thing I was wondering about is the new norms, because there, the norms for, for working with student services shift based on who the assistant superintendent is. And Casey is, I think, the fourth one I've, I've known and worked with. But what, what's, what is the structure of the new norms? Like what? Or Casey, this might be better for you to answer. How, what's, what's different or what's working differently than it did before?
I mean, before Casey jumps in, I'll just say some of it is making things like just good meeting norms, making them explicit. You know, like you said, every time CPAC changes, the board changes, if the director changes, you know, there's like a getting to know you period. So we found it from our point of view, like kind of helpful to sort of codify things that are just good meeting practices. I don't think there was any disagreement about how, and we just put them in every agenda. And I don't know if Casey, you want to say anything else. It just was sort of to just like, just sort of codify how we wanted to interact.
Yeah, I think we made explicit the the ways that we would interact with each other when we raise issues, when there are things that we don't agree with. How do we get to a consensus? Or how do we get to the next steps? I would highly recommend any group that is working with, any parent group that's working with the school district to engage in this process. I, I think CPAC would agree too, but it's been highly successful. It has allowed us to work through some of the, the sort of crunchier, stickier topics that we may not necessarily agree on, but that we've been able to come to resolution on, which has been great. And it allows us to focus on families and students.
That's hopeful.
Yeah. And we're happy to share them, by the way, as Ani said, they're on the top of every agenda.
Nothing's going to be a surprise. You'll be like, yes, everybody should do this for every meeting.
Yeah. But I think the process of making it explicit and having CPAC so willing to listen was huge.
And if I could just add, I think like one example, Rajiv, was there was communications that we would share and then communications that CPAC would share with their network and they weren't, they weren't joint. And so there was sometimes confusion and misalignment and then hard feelings about how something was phrased here and not phrased here. This is just one example. And so there was a coming together of like, how are we going to share this? Here's how I'm going to do it. Here's how we're going to do it. And we're going to do it together. And it just took down all the, all the issues. That was one that I recall, but there were others.
It's good to know. We, we did have something like that in place earlier and I was just wondering how codified it.
I mean, it's just, it's in every agenda. So I don't know in the future, will next year's board continue to use it? It's like the institutional knowledge, will it stick? I mean, it should.
Should.
It should. They're all common sense, good things, but I don't know. Sometimes you need those things just to like, remind everybody.
Got it. Well, thank you. And there, there are a couple of things I can, I'll follow up with later, but the, just to emphasize on Ping's question around the new IEP. I think it's better, but it's very different. And so multiple trainings would not be a bad thing. I think, you know, we, we talked, Casey, when she had done her student services update, we talked about that as well. And I know there was, there were a couple of trainings planned.
The last training was back in, I think, early September at the beginning of the school year. The other trainings were over the summer. We, CPAC thinks it would be helpful to have more because not everybody could go over the summer. There was just one during the school year. Now we've had a whole, and maybe now that people have kind of been through the process, you know, like the trainings will be more helpful perhaps. But even just recording a webinar, you know, we think might be helpful. Like it doesn't necessarily have to be, but just walking through like, where do you find the stuff that was in this bit? Where is it now in the new bit? Like, you're going to get this Google form. Because it is a challenge. Anybody who's tried to go from the old IEP to the new IEP. You know, my daughter has a lot of accommodations, a lot of accommodations. And, you know, you got to go through, you know, control F and looking like, is this, did this transfer over? Not that anybody would drop things on purpose, but when you're dealing with a big document, sometimes things don't cross over and you just have to make sure. So, you know, I, I think, and I think families can be, I mean, you understand sometimes as a population, like, you're like, how is this going to impact my kid? Like how, you know, and people with very good intentions can implement things and that it impacts your kid in a negative way. Nobody even realizes it. And then, so like, people get nervous, right? So, you know, you have to make sure that, like, the knowledge is very helpful, I think, in assuaging that, the nerves sometimes.
Understood. And I think like, like many parents, we certainly went through a process of what's the mapping from, from the old to the new. But just understanding how the new one works is, is.
I mean, it is a new process. It's like the content's all the same, but the process is new and families have to sort of realize how that's working.
So that would be good, certainly for the fall to, to have, have a refresher.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rajiv, other questions from members? Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, all the information and apologies for the late hour.
Thank you, Sarah and Casey.
Given the late hour, I'm going to recommend that maybe we suspend the rest of this agenda. As I don't want to leave. Yes. Tamika?
I'll see. Is there any timing sensitive?
We just need it before the end of the year so we can train all the principals and everyone on earth around it this summer and at the start of school.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't want to feel like a, a discussion is necessarily being cut short. There's important things on there, but there was a lot of important discussion this evening. So, yes, Emily.
Just a reminder to the committee that the superintendent's evaluation forms are due 26.
Twenty-something.
Twenty-six. Yahoo!
Okay. Well, with that, we will, we'll hold these other three items for a future meeting and we're adjourned. Thank you.